Evening, everybody. Welcome to our regular council meeting for Wednesday, November 6, 2024. We're almost all here. We're missing councillor Ball tonight. She's under the weather, sends her regrets. But here in spirit, I'd like to call the meeting to order and just start with our traditional land acknowledgement, which is the Town of Midland recognizing that it's located on land, which is the traditional and treaty territory of the Nation of the People, now known as the Chippewa Tri-council comprised of Bozley First Nation, Rama First Nation and Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within pre-conferedation treaty five and treaty sixteen and included within the Williams Treaties of 1923. Town of Midland also recognizes it's located on land, which is a traditional territory of the Huron-Wendat and the historic homelands of the Métis, and that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous people. I'd like to also deliver the following safety message. Should the fire alarm activate, please exit the room in orderly fashion and proceed to the evacuation assembly area, which is located in the upper parking lot. You may exit through the main glass doors, make an immediate left, proceed out the front doors and through the secondary exit or through the secondary exit back here, and up the stairs and check the door for heat before opening. And if it's safe, exit onto the second floor, turn right and proceed out the doors in front of you. Washrooms are located on the second floor and elevator is located just outside the main entrance here. As Midland has a respectful workplace policy, anyone exhibiting violent or harassing behavior will be asked to leave. Members of the audience are to maintain order and quiet or not to address council except with the permission of the chair. All cell phones and pagers and other electronic devices which emit a sound are to be turned off or set to non-audible, please. No person shall display signs or placards, applaud participants or debate and engage in conversations electronic or otherwise or behave in a way which may disrupt the proceedings of council. Now, for anyone requiring a hearing assist device, please advise the clerk and she'll arrange with her IT staff to provide you with said device. Council meetings are recorded by Zoom and are posted to the town's YouTube site. The meetings are also broadcast on Rogers TV Midland Channel 53 when available. Individual recording, broadcasting or streaming the meetings by the public committee member is not permitted without the express consent of the clerk and all those persons. So get through the housekeeping. I now call in council and everyone attending to have a moment of silent reflection, but anything you wish. I'm going to send mine out to councillor Ball, who is not able to be with us tonight. Thank you. Council, there any declarations of conflict of interest relating to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, if one should arise during discussion, just put your hand up and let us know and make the declaration and we'll deal with it at that time. Next, I have a motion here moved by councillor Patel, seconded by councillor major, that the contents of this regular council with, there is no closed session tonight. This regular council agenda for November 6th. Shows you, I just literally read what I'm told. For November 6, 2024, be approved as amended, and that being an addition of a motion as presented by the mayor, me, under section seventeen motions for which notice was given, requesting support for the addition of my signature on a correspondence from the elected mayors across the province to the premier of Ontario requesting assistance from the provincial government with respect to issues relating to mental health addiction and homeless encampments. That's a late addition, council, and I'd ask for your approval about adding that. Any questions? All right, all those in favor? Oh, Deputy Mayor?
Sorry, I missed that. I don't have it on mine. I don't think I do. Yes, I do. Okay, so this is the letter that's going to the province to sweep all our homeless people out of their camps and out of town?
That's part of the request, but we're not, so we're not approving that right now, that we're just approving the fact that we're going to pop it onto the agenda so we can discuss it tonight. Because it wasn't published, it kind of slid in in the last minute because of it being a timely matter. So if council consents to it being slipped onto the agenda without the normal notice that would be needed, then it will come up for a discussion later in the evening under your section. She under my section, I'm sorry, but you're going to be chairing it because it's my motion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so with that one addition councillor, let's call the question then. All those in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. Next, move by council three, seconded by councillor Patel, that the items and related recommendations contained within November 6, 2024 consent agenda as consent items having been considered by council be adopted with the exception of the following four reports that have been pulled. Item 5.4.4 CSR 2024-100, 2025 OPP standard billing model. Item 5.4.6 CSR 2024-102, 2024 culture and community summary. Item 5.4.7 CSR 2024-103, RFP number PLN 2024-038, Midland Bay Landing Consultant Phase One. And item 5.4.9 CSR 2024-105, the heritage street sign signage for Dollar Town, which those four items will be considered under section twelve reports and other items from consented, withdrawn from the consent agenda for council's consideration, which also includes presentations by consultants regarding a report under consideration. With those modifications to our consent agenda council, this is your time to speak to any other matters that aren't pulled that you wanted to say something about. If you have any comments, questions, councillor McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. I just have one question in regards to the correspondence. And it's just an example. A M O watch file, October 17th, they refer to emergency preparedness grant and community and spirit infrastructure funds. And I'm, my question is, does do we take advantage of those grants? Yeah, do we apply for every grant that we see?
I think I know someone in the room who might know the answer, Ms. Button.
So through your worship to councillor McDonald. Yes, we do. So we have someone in on staff that actually looks out and comes through the government websites, the FCM, so the Federation of Canadian Municipalities and Infrastructure Ontario and any other website they can to see if there's any grants available. We also have staff that look on a, on a daily basis as well, and then we're all signed up to emails where we'll get notifications of any grants. And after the grant comes in, we'll share the grant with that respective area and they will write up the grant proposal. And we have someone that reviews it to make sure that any of the information, all, all the information that's required from the government grant is on the sheet that we've applied every, every rule that they have put in place. And then we continue to monitor and and ensure that we get any grants. So as you know, we've been very successful in achieving a thirty, just over $30 million grant this year. And we've been successful in quite a few grants in various areas, including events and, and other areas. We also just, I'll do a bit of a plug for budget. One of the reasons we are successful in the Husef Grant is that we had done some pre-work ahead of time for studies. And we are coming forward this year with budget to have studies done in different areas such as, you know, the waterfront master plan we're, we're working on, the parks master plan and others so that we can be prepared for when these grants come on board.
Thank you. It's encouraging.
Any other comments, questions for other thing councillor Patel?
Thank you, Your Worship. So I just wanted to mention from the CIP, the Link Transit Service celebrated their millionth rider, which has been a positive thing for our community. For people don't have access to transportation to go into Barry or I guess that's the main hospital they all go to.
All right, lovely. With that, then I will call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie. And next, move by deputy mayor Prost, seconded by councillor Bald, that council resolve into committee of the whole. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried, we are in committee of the whole. Deputy Mayor.
Okay, if you're following along, we're at number seven. A public meeting and hearing, we have none. Presentations, we have none. Integrity Commissioner Recommendation Report, there was none. Deputations, petitions, there is none. Committee and local board delegation. Mr. Herb Vanden, Vanden-Duel is here with Dan Downey, here to present to council with respect to lowering the speed limit throughout the Town of Midland. And this presentation is for, is to be received for information. Would you like to stack up, step up to the podium, please? I just want to let you know that we have 10 minutes.
Great, thank you. Timer. All right, our proposal is about lowering speed limits in Midland. This is in honor of Jim Downer, who had also proposed this last year. So we're the Midland Active Transportation Advisory Committee. You may remember us from earlier this year when we also presented. And next slide, please. Midland residents want slower streets. You may have seen a lot of slowdown signs around town. There's fewer now, but I've seen some last few years. Council has lowered speed limits on some of the streets, including Cook Drive, Fourth Street and and perhaps some others we don't know about, but it's been one offs. So why not standardize them across Midland? Next slide. So just an overview or a presentation. We'll talk about the dangers of high speed traffic, the benefits of lowering the speed limits, how to start and where to start, best practices from other municipalities in Canada, recommendations and questions. Next slide. Dangers of speeding. Next slide. Speeding kills. So from the, the World Health Organization, they've, they've got data that at 50 kilometers an hour in a collision between a person, pedestrian and a vehicle, the survival rate is 50% of, is 15%. Next slide. For the Midland case, we do know that the, there is a lot of speeding here and there from the town's study of Young Street. During the school time, speed limit, which is 40 kilometers an hour, 65% of drivers exceed this, the posted speed limit. In the report, it talks about the acceptable speed limit, but that's usually because the police are normally only and traditionally have only ticketed if the speed limit's 10%, 10 kilometers over the speed limit. Next, please.
You just said that. What I was going to say. Yes, Herb already said that, but they've done in South Simcoe, the OPP have done some statistics and said the average driver drives in from 10 to 15 kilometers over the speed limit. So you have an unmarked speed limit of 50. That means some of them are doing 60 or even 65. So that's one of the reasons why we're proposing to lower the speed limit to 40. So hopefully then they'll do 50.
Next slide. So Midland has high traffic injury rates. This is from the Simcoe-Muskoka District Health Unit. Midland has the second highest traffic injury rate compared to the rest of Simcoe and Simcoe-Muskoka. And the Simcoe-Muskoka traffic injury rate is higher, much higher than the provincial average, which means that Midland is much higher than the rest of Ontario. So it's not something to be proud of, something we can hopefully work on. Next slide. The benefits of lowering speed limits. Next. So lowering the speed limit helps all ages and abilities be more active. So streets with high vehicle speeds are dangerous to pedestrians and cyclists. Children, elderly and those with disabilities of high, have difficulties navigating the traffic and staying safe. And lowering the speed limit makes the streets safer. Next slide.
I just want to share a personal experience that I have, that two years ago, we had, I called a a meeting of other people in our neighborhood because when I moved into our street, the speeding was unbelievable. And so we had a town hall meeting and Bill and Jim attended along with some other members of council. And so we did have our area and it's Cook Drive and yeah, Cook Drive and Wright Drive. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank Bill because he sponsored that being made into a public community safety zone. But I must say that because of the signage is there, people do slow down. Most of them, it's not a panacea, you need other kinds of things to get people to slow down. But again, it certainly has made a difference on our street.
I think you're the next one, too. Next slide, please.
Yep, it doesn't matter. We want to recommend that there's a townwide standard. There has been some suggestions that something like this could go in different areas as needed or phased in, but we think the community feels that that would be confusing. And it would really be more helpful if we're going to make a 40 kilometer speed limit in residential streets, that it goes across the whole town.
Next slide, please. Oh, this one's yours, too. This one's yours, too.
Yes, we did. And you have the letter from the OPP superintendent. We did meet with the OPP. And he was actually very helpful in giving us some ideas in terms of how we can implement a 40 kilometer speed limit. And they were, he was very supportive of us doing this in terms of enforcement and also helping us with advertising and getting the word out that the speed limits, if they are dropped, have been dropped.
Next slide, please. So we think this will also help make more streets eligible for traffic calming. Currently, most residential streets are likely not eligible for the, for traffic calming under Midland's policy around this. In our in our estimation. A lot of residents feel that 50 kilometers per hour is too fast. Staff may attest to this. They get a lot of complaints about speeding and then find out that a lot of them are within the speed limit. Yet drivers are still within the speed limit. But reducing the speed limit may allow more residential streets to be eligible. Next, please. It should not impact the travel time. Yeah, it changes it. Posted speed limits do not impact the travel time. The, the biggest factors are usually traffic volume, signal timing, collisions and weather. This is based on a report by the city of Calgary. Next, please. So it should lower the average speeds. There will still be some outliers, drivers who just ignore everything and just drive really fast, but based on other places, the average speeds do go down. Next, please. Where to start? Next. So Midland has a transportation master plan that actually has recommended that the town study 30 kilo, 30 kilometer hours on local streets. So that's one, one place we could start. But next, next slide. Other municipalities have taken other approaches as well. We can look at the successes of other places like Guelph, Orangeville, Calgary, Ottawa, Montreal, Toronto, Hamilton and so on. And a number of these have done studies as well. Next. Oh, you want to say some less? Yep.
I have property in Hamilton and they lowered the speed limits to 40 in all residential streets. And in some of the residential streets, they lowered them to 30. I was unable to find an evaluation of that, which is something we're probably going to recommend that if this goes through, that we evaluate how this is going, but just from talking to people in Hamilton, it has been very successful and it's made a big difference even on the street that I know where my house is. So it, it does work.
So this is a study from Toronto, probably the most complete study published in a scientific journal. Found that just lowering the speed limits with no other interventions, no increased enforcement did lower collisions and, and injuries. And they, they compared it between the downtown where they had lowered them and Scarborough. And since that, the study was done, they've now across the entire city have lowered it on all residential streets. Next. So some examples that Midland can study, learn from. Orangeville, they've lowered it across the entire city to 40 kilometers an hour, but they've made exceptions for some of the major artillery roads. Toronto, we've already talked about, residential streets are 30, citywide default is 40 and some exceptions for the, the larger roads. Hamilton, they reduced it to 40. And Lethbridge, Alberta. They've also, in addition to lowering some speed limits here and there, have in schools, near schools and playgrounds, they've done every day, dawn to dusk, it's a third of kilometers an hour. So it's, it's very standardized. It's very predictable for drivers. If you're near playground or school zone, it's 30 kilometers and that's it. And some of them have speed cameras as well. Next slide, please.
Yes, I know one of the issues that will come up will be enforcement, but again, we did meet with the OPP. And they're quite willing to meet us on this. And as evidence, two, twice in the last two weeks on my street, we've had actually speed traps after, and I think the OPP will respond if there are complaints or problem areas. So I don't think enforcement, it, it's not a panacea. It's not going to solve everything. But at least with a police presence, it, it may slow people down a bit more.
Next slide. So we're getting near the end. The recommendations from Midland to implement and evaluate the effects of lowering speed limits. So with a study to come before that, choose the best practices from other Canadian municipalities. After a review of some of the things that we've studied and otherwise, adopt the automated speed enforcement recommendation that will be coming to council. And we also recommend adopting the dawn to dusk speed limits in school zones and playground zones. And also adopting a vision zero plan. Vision zero is about eliminating all traffic fatalities and injuries and a number of municipalities around the world have, have adopted these. And a plan is, is the first step. And then after that is to look at how can you start approaching that? The idea is that no, no amount of deaths or injuries from traffic are acceptable and that we should work towards limiting that. Next slide. I've, we've also provided a backgrounder, which goes into some more detail around some of these municipalities. It may be in your, in your package there. Next. Any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. Did we have questions from council? Councillor Easton.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I know that it was very meaningful to my dear friend, Jim Downer and Catherine McDonald. I know this is very important. You know, I would agree that speed is a serious issue. We live in almost a world where a car turning onto incoming traffic, the car is actually speed up now instead of allowing the proper speed, which would create the proper distance so that people can actually turn onto roads. So what I am noticing is that, you know, community drivers are more apt to speed up instead of slowing down. But I think that, you know, slowing it down would be great. I'm just curious to know how much the budget's going to affect us. And I think the second question I had is, and this might be for our staff, do our bylaw officers have the ability to police this as well? Or would it just be strictly OPP that would be covering that? And, and once again, thank you. I know it was very meaningful to Catherine and Jim.
Okay, what was your first question again?
First question was the budget. Second question was if our bylaw could police this.
The budget is, is still open because I, there will be some budget impact. In the past, I believe that staff had given an answer to council about when Jim Downer brought it, about the cost of signage. But it really depends how the town would implement it and based on what the staff recommend. That can make a big difference in the, the impact, I believe.
One of the things that the OPP person did suggest, we don't have to put 40 kilometer signs on every street. One of the suggestions was to sign saying unless otherwise posted at strategic areas in the town, the speed limit is 40 so that you'd know that it was 50 on places like Young Street and that, but again, it would have signage saying 40 kilometers unless otherwise posted.
And I, I guess believe the second question is for staff. Is that right? Thank you through the chair. So for if speed enforcement, we would be leading that to the OPP to, to monitor and control. Staff don't have the equipment or the training to, to be able to, to do that type of enforcement. And I don't think we, we probably have the jurisdiction to do that either. Thank you.
Councillor Major.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Post, Herb, Dan. So I'm not understanding, you're, you want to go from 50 down to 30 and not stop at 40?
Well, so we're, we're just looking at what other municipalities have done. The, that we don't know, we want to see what the staff have to say if they, what they recommend. So it may be that if you follow the master plan, Midland's master plan, then we'd be looking at lowering it to 30 kilometers on residential streets. But other places like Orangeville, for example, or, or Hamilton have lowered them down to 40. So 30 or 40 is, seems to be the two options for residential streets. And then you've got collector streets, whether they stay the same as artillery roads or whether they also go down to 40. That's an option. I think typically though, that what I've seen is on the artillery roads, they've tended to be split. But if they're I believe in, in Toronto, a lot of them in the, in the core are 40, but there's some of the major ones that are still 50. So it depends what they're, they're posted. So it's not, it's not a simple answer, but so we don't have an exact recommendation other than let's, let's study and come back with some solid recommendations for from staff.
Okay, because I helped Dan get Cook Avenue down to what it is. I just did a couple of trial runs and I've got a few of my family do a couple of trial runs around town at 30. It just doesn't seem feasible to anyone I've talked to. Because, and I don't, I don't agree with going from 50 down to 30. Like, I'm just not a fan of that. I understand the 40, but not the 30 at all.
And I think you'll have a chance, based on what staff bring back to, see what whether it aligns with what you think is the, the right approach.
You asked me a question?
I'm just saying that at this point, we're not going to be saying 30 or 40 or, or whatnot, but when, if, if council agrees to have staff study this and come back, then at that point, I guess you can vote for one of the options that they provide.
Okay, that's fair.
Sorry, tonight is for information only. Do we have any other? Do we have any other questions for clarification? Counselor Meredith.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Post. Through you to. Herb and Dan. I think it was the third or fourth slide in, you had a some data. Um, of Simcoe County, Midland was the highest uh, amongst speeders in in Simcoe County. I believe that was there. Now, was that, was that data compiled on all the communities that had a fifty kilometer? Um, like apples to apples?
Uh, the, that's the injury rates, is that the, from the Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit? That would be, is it this one or? It would be slide. Slide eight. This one here?
Yes, yeah, that's it. That's second highest traffic injury rate. So would that be, would that be data be compiled with all the the communities being at a fifty kilometer? Uh, speed, speed limit?
Um, it, this is from all municipalities regardless of what the posted speed limits are. So.
Just trying to figure out why Midland's the second highest, that's all, if they ever compare an apple style.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it's hard to to know for sure. We do know that when you look at just speed limits, it does have an impact, but there may be other factors as well. That we, uh, it'd be good to know what they are, but.
Counselor McDonald.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Post. I I just have a comment more than a question. That knowing that this presentation was coming up, I've been practicing to see. How it is to drive forty kilometers? And I've got to admit, it's not going to be easy to adapt. But we, because we're creatures of habit, but it's doable. We just have to switch our mind. So and I want to thank the Active Transportation Committee for their dedication. And their sincere concern for the safety of the town of Midland. And there is a notice of motion later on in this evening. To that hopefully the, my fellow counselors will support, that recommends that staff. Do provide a report and recommendations to us in the future. So thank you.
Thank you. May I respond to one thing that Catherine brought up, Counselor McDonald brought up?
Yes, you may.
Um, in in my experience, I at one point I did try to see what would it be like to drive. The speed limit fifty kilometers on on a number of our side streets. Uh, such as the street I live on. And I found it difficult to maintain fifty kilometers an hour. It it felt quite, quite fast. So I I could understand on a, say, Young or Hugel going forty, it it feels unnatural, but. On any of these residential streets, it's it's actually quite hard to maintain that speed limit. Uh, even though that's what it's posted. Yeah.
Yeah, as I said, it's not going to solve all the speeding problems. People tend to speed. Uh, and pretty since COVID, it seems to be a people's speed, but I think it's more. Uh, on streets like mine where it's a shortcut to Young Street or Aberdeen Boulevard where you get the. A stretch and people just kind of take off. Uh, so again, and forty isn't that bad really if. From what I've seen on our street, people doing forty and they still get from one end to the other.
Seeing no further questions, I'll read the motion. That council accept the recommendations as presented by the Chair of the Midland Active Transportation Committee. For information purposes, could I have a mover in a second or please? Counselor McDonald and Counselor East. All in favor? That's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. On to number twelve. Reports and other items withdrawn from the agenda for council consideration. That staff report CSR dash twenty twenty four dash one hundred, twenty twenty five OPP standard billing model dated November sixth, twenty twenty four. Be received for information. Could I have a mover in a second or please? Counselor East and Counselor Major. Open the floor for discussion. Counselor McDonald.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Post. I had this report hold. And and my questions are fairly straightforward, but I thought perhaps my fellow counselors might have some questions as well or comments. And so my first question was, has the Georgian Bay OPP Regional Detachment Board. Met and determined the objectives and priorities for police services?
Thank you, Counselor, or sorry Deputy Mayor Post to Counselor McDonald. So the board composition is still in progress. And so once the board is complete and the members are trained. That's when those objectives and priorities would be established.
Supplement question, if I may. Thank you. Is there a deadline, a date target when the composition? Is going to take place?
Uh, to to you, Counselor McDonald. Not that I'm aware of, but I I do know that it is in progress, that it is actively in progress.
Well, hopefully we can get it together soon. And and then it's the cost for service, a four-year rolling average cost. Which four years with and which was it an average for all the four municipalities or just ours?
To Counselor McDonald, so that is an average ba- based on all of the calls received provincially. Uh, and so our portion of those calls is one point six three percent. And so our share then is is essentially based on. So there's a weighted time standard that's applied to every call and so. That that four-year rolling average is is based on those historical calls per service.
Follow up? Just. I'll follow through to the increase that we're. Shocked and burdened with. Who signed the OPP collective agreement with, was it the province? And no one had any input. And then I I'm sorry that I I didn't clarify the fifty-six percent interest cost for prisoner transportation. That. Um, they said, uh, it went up. Because of the, it was lower pre-pandemic. So my my comment there is perhaps we should return to the pre-pandemic service. So that we don't have a fifty-six percent increased cost in transportation. It worked before, so. Go back to, can the board make a recommendation that isn't established yet? Like, how do we get our message across?
So my understanding is the board actually doesn't have any. Input or say on on that part of it. The fifty-six percent increase, you write, is because we have returned to that pre-pandemic service. So during the pandemic, those those hearings, those court hearings were held via Zoom. And so those costs, those prisoner transportation costs to Barry to Arilia, those were saved. But again, that is provincial wide, so there is a provincial wide sort of standard cost. That is applied and then based on the number of properties, that's what Midland's share is. Um, so again. I would say largely out of our control.
Thank you.
Counselor Meredith.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Post. And just to follow up or kind of go off your your comment on how how do we get the message across for this. Uh, shocker of OPP billing, you know, we sit up here and we have a vote and it's going to come to us during budget. And we just say no. We we just take a stand and say no. And other municipalities should follow and that would send a message to the provincial government. Saying this is unacceptable for small municipalities to take this burden on. So um, my vote, and I've already made up my decision during budget. Is no to this increase. It's a ridiculous increase of one point two million without any warning, twenty-six percent over last year. Is absolutely devastating to a small community like ours. So my stance is no.
Counselor East.
To maybe my counselors as well, I would even take it one step forward and why don't we bill? Send a nice bill to the provincial government or the federal government. Seeing as they put us in this situation, I think that they should be held accountable for putting us in this situation, so. You're right, it's devastating to a small municipality like ours. And seeing in the situation that the world is in right now, especially Canada. Maybe we should be looking at sending a bill to the provincial government or the federal government.
Counselor Major.
Dear Deputy Mayor Post. I think for me, the amount of people I talk to around town. And I'm happy the mayor actually put the price out. And I got families in their forties, fifties, seniors. And the biggest thing on their minds is how are they going to come up with the, to pay their taxes? And with that increase by the OPP. And with some of them looking around and seeing what we get for our money. Uh, it's going to be a big concern. I think I'll be going with Counselor Meredith.
Mayor Gordon.
I got all kinds of, all kinds of things I could say about this, including. Told you so. We all knew this was going to happen. We haven't saved any money. We still owe three and a half million bucks for disbanding. So any potential savings. You know, don't exist until you have paid that cost of disbanding down, but it is what it is. We're here. Policing is expensive. If we still had our own police, it would still be expensive. But I can tell you right now that no chief would ever be allowed to go to their board and say, oh, surprise, we're going to jack up our cost of policing by twenty-six percent. It just, it's never happened and it wouldn't happen because the board has control over the budget of the police service. We gave that up knowingly when we opted to disband and contract the OPP. So just a little reminder for those of how we got here. The reality is that every year that's gone by since twenty eighteen. It would be a guess on our part on what Midland Police's fantasy budget would be and the increases that would have been. And every year that's gone by, the guess becomes more and more fuzzy and it's totally subjective. So if you want to make a case that one's cheaper than the other, you make the numbers up. Because there's just no way to know, too much time's gone by. So this isn't about, you know, dwelling in the past, it's just about remembering how we got here. So this is a decision that was made, we made it, and we are now reaping what we sow. So now the million dollar question. When I got this email, you know, I did some quick math on my calculator and it was like, oh my God, this can't be right. So I fired it off to the CIO and CFO and it was worse because I actually didn't factor in some of this stuff. And then I start reaching out to my colleagues and it turns out just about four hundred municipalities in the province got similar. Surprise emails that Friday. And it's just crippling us. So since then, I've spent a considerable amount of time liaising with my colleagues. Uh, I had occasion to get down to a sort of a fundraising type event for our Minister of Housing. And Municipal Affairs and bumped into our aide, our Attorney General down there as well. And this was the number one complaint that they were getting. It was just filling their inboxes. Which is undermining all the other sort of good work that they're trying to do to build up good faith for what we largely believe is going to be an early election call. Uh, this is killing because it doesn't matter what other stuff they do, how many checks they send people. You know, raising people's taxes four to eight percent on top of whatever it costs to run a municipality. You know, no one's going to forget that in the spring. So they know that. They are live to this. And my assurance is from the premier directly, there's a guy I can text and he literally calls me back. The guy does this. And, you know, I don't do this often because I'm sure lots of people bend his ear. But in speaking to the premier about this, this was his number one thing they're working on. So I expect to see for the, just under four hundred municipalities that are impacted by these, you know, staggering absurd increases. Uh, I expect to see some relief coming in the next month. I don't know what that looks like. Clearly, they weren't going to tell me, other than they said, Bill, it's coming. Help is coming. We're not quite sure how we're going to manage this yet, but there's something coming. I'm, I'd like to believe that, you know, as we get into the end of November, there'll be a big announcement. And they'll offer some relief to the, especially the smalls like us. However, that doesn't change the sentiment that, you know, we shouldn't have been in this place in the first place. Uh, clearly, we can expect that the savings that we accrued during COVID, you know, weren't weren't going to be carried forward post-COVID. Because, you know, prisoner transport, now when there's bail hearings, even though, you know, we hear about catch and release, there's still bail hearings. So they have to drive them down to Barry where the bail hearings are. And in the weekends and holidays, it is still done over, you know. Video conference called Wash Court. But every year time they're driving them down now. So the cost of prisoner transport is going to go up. They have to recover the cost of the special constables that drive those trucks, the gas, the food, the lodging. Midland is, you know, we have a courthouse, but there's no bail hearings happening here, but we pay for the security. And all the other costs of of housing prisoners in the municipality because we host the courthouse. Just as Penetang has been paying much of their chagrin, the cost of of the policing the jail because they happen to host the jail. So there are, these, these are largely. There's nothing we can do about it. The board has no jurisdiction in the operational decisions of how the OPP operate. We can set priorities for our community. And the the real advantage with the new board is that now there's five of us sitting at the tables, the detachment commander only has to do one horse and pony show with the PowerPoint. Rather than going around five times, four times a year. So it's really to make the province work better that they've created this new detachment board model. We haven't yet met, we we still are missing our two, two of our three appointees, which is kind of silly after all this time. We just finally got insurance about a month ago because there was a big gap in what how these boards even became. You know, insured because they weren't, you know, miserable boards anymore and they weren't like regular corporations. There were this, there's weird gaps. Nobody had had insurance for boards across the province. That's being remedied through the work of the OAPSB. There was a bunch of training we had to do. I did it. It's quite lengthy. Um, and the other members of the board have, but then they popped a new one on us that has to be done. So I've been pressing to have a first meeting so we can at least have a procedure policy adopted and then have a vote on who's the chair and, you know. Actually meet. But it turns out we got to get this other, it's an indigenous cultural safety type training package they've just assigned us. We have to get that done and it's lengthy. So I'm halfway through it and I spent three hours already, so it's about six hours. We have to get everybody on the board to get it done before we can meet. So that's the rules. So to, just to look a bit of, add some color to the answer for you, Counselor McDonald, it is frustrating to me that we haven't met. This whole thing went live in April. We haven't had a meeting yet and at this rate, we may not meet until December. Now about not paying the bill. That's interesting. I don't actually know what would happen. Now about not paying the bill. That's interesting. I don't actually know what would happen. I'm sure the meter for interest would roll, just like if you don't pay your taxes and you protest with the government and don't pay your taxes, provincially or federally, uh, that never usually ends well for you. I suppose we could try that, but I really don't think we'd win. I suspect they're coming to our aid because, you know, they don't want to form government again. So we're going to see some relief. Is it a one, one-time deal? Or can we expect that same bailout or whatever they give us every three years when they negotiate new contracts? Because this likely will happen every three to four years as new contracts get signed. Uh, because the way it works is OPP usually gets the highest pay, um, in the province. And they're, they're only the highest paid until Toronto Police negotiates their contract. And that, which then is better than OPP's. So then they're the highest paid and it's like a leapfrog and that's just the way it works. And if you don't like it, uh, then you go to arbitration and nine times out of ten, you lose. And again, we have no say over in this. We opted for a contract relationship. And going back, as people have said online when they were freaking out about this, as I was, just isn't financially possible for us as a lone municipality. Because again, we still got under, just under four million to pay off before we can call it savings of having done this in the first place. And the savings is fantastic at the best, you know, we're making it up because who knows what the cost of having our own police would have been by now. So going back is beyond us, you know, rough estimates would be ten, fifteen million in capital. Plus you're still going to pay the, those cops that would come to the new police service, about the same as OPP. Because police all get paid around the same in the province. So us doing it alone is not practical. I think even if Penetang decided, hey, let's get together and make a joint police service, which was floated around way back in the jury martial days. It, it's too, still too much money. We'd almost need all of North Simcoe to do that. At the bare minimum, we'd need those four municipalities and their funding to upfront the costs of building a new police service, not to mention nobody's ever done it in the province. Other people that have been unhappy with OPP have gone to other services nearby. Like I think Saint Mary's went to Sarnia because it was like right next to them. We don't have a, right next to us, police service to hook onto like Barry Police. If we were Springwater Oro and we wanted to change, we could probably go talk to Barry Police and talk about expanding because the borders are touch. But we're an island here. So there just is no real option on this. Like I just don't see any option other than to appeal to the province to have mercy for heaven's sake. Because we just can't afford an increase overnight like this. I even asked the premier, could you phase it in for us? Do us a solid, phase it in over six years or at least four years when there's going to be another cycle. So I've, I've done what I can as your, as your head of council, lobbying with the head poobas that I have access to. And I genuinely feel that they weren't just listening to me and blowing me off. I, they're feeling the pain because there's so many people crying the blues about this. Something's coming, but I don't know what it is. So for now, we kind of have to just accept this is what it is. And it's going to be about a four percent tax increase for our residents before we even talk about what it costs to run the town and all of our ABCs. So it's scary. We could be looking at double-digit tax increases because of this, through no fault of our own. You know, which is just, I, I, I can't do it. It actually keeps me up at night. So I, I share your, your, um, your angst about this, your disdain, disgust. There's lots of adjectives that I could put on this. It's not the frontline coppers. This is, um, the province and the, in the administration of a very large, expensive, uh, police service. My last thing I want to say, because I didn't really mean to get up here and monologue, is I believe that it would be in the interest of all municipalities to send this hocus pocus type, uh, funding model that they created about, just about eight, nine years ago to the Auditor General for review and have him or her try and unmake the soup and figure out how this works. Because I can tell you from my experience, you know, in policing for twenty-five years. This community, we didn't charge the town of Midland for, when I say we, the former Midland Police Service. Our budgets didn't include a base cost of policing and then a cost for calls for service. You paid the base cost of policing. If we had twenty-six police officers, which I think we had when we shut down, they were working in platoons of four. And there was always somebody off sick or on training or whatever. It's the same challenge as OPP has, just a different scale. But you knew, you were paying these guys for twelve hours. So you knew what the cost was. And it didn't matter if they answered zero calls, which there were nights where there were zero calls. Or if you had to answer fifteen calls, that's still what you were making. You were being paid to do the job, whether the phone rang or not. You're still expected to drive around and shake doors and go looking for things. But you were paid. There was no ability and no municipal police service's bills of base cost plus calls for service. This is an invention of the OPP. So I feel we're actually paying twice. And I've talked to people that are smarter than me about this, former chiefs, and they concur. This, this billing model is, is just completely unfair because you're actually being double digged. What they should be doing is raising the base cost of policing, pay for the true cost of policing. And it's an all-you-can-eat model, whether you're busy or you're not. Because there are municipalities that are way bigger than us that are paying less for policing than us, Orangeville, for example. Which makes no sense. And I can't even look out to my good residents and say, residents, please, to save money, don't call the cops for everything. So when someone breaks into your shed or scratches your card at the superstore, don't call the police because you're, you're driving up our taxes. That's not even true. Because it's not a one-to-one ratio between you calling the dispatch center, a police officer coming. And it's not like they press the one on the incrementer and we pay more money. Because we pay a fractional percentage of all the calls for service for the whole province and the costs. That we have no control over this. So you even dialing back on your reliance on the police doesn't even save us money in the grand scheme of things. Because you'd have to get every municipality to do that for it would actually make a difference. And then you're suffering without police service. So there's, I had lots to say on this. It's frustrating. I don't think not paying the bill is the answer. I don't think that would bode well. It could be an interesting protest. We'd end up paying it in the end. But I think I'm, I'm relying on the assurances I got from ministers and the provincial government and from the premier himself that help of some form is on the way. And I just, I'm hoping that I, that hap comes to pass and it comes to pass November. So before we get the draft budget, we'll know what that help is and it can help Adam CFO. And she slides that PDF our way and doesn't give, well, gives us a stroke. So there you go. I'm going to need a glass of water now, but that's what I have to say on this one. And thanks for pulling it because if the report does stand on its own, but I think there was a lot more meat that we needed to put on the bones for the community that's looking at this figuring, oh, thank you. Um, you know, you have to do something for us. We hear you loud and clear and we're going to do everything we can. Because this is out of our hands, but that doesn't really matter to you. Thank you.
Counselor Major.
Maybe you should reach out to the premier in the province and tell him not to give two hundred dollars to every man, woman and child in the province and put the money towards policing, because I really don't care about the two hundred dollars. But it'd be pretty good if the, that, what is it, three billion? Well, it just put the three billion into policing around the province would be a lot better.
Seeing no further questions or comments, um, we're clearly at the mercy of the province and I hope they come through. Uh, you've heard the motion. Um, it's to be, be received for information. All in favor. Opposed? One. Thank you. Okay, we're on to number twelve point two. The staff report CSR dash twenty twenty-four dash one oh two, twenty twenty-four Culture and Community Summary, dated November sixth, twenty twenty-four, be received for information. Could I have a mover and a second or please? Counselor McDonald. And Counselor Major. It's open for discussion. Counselor McDonald.
Thank you. I have a comment and then three questions through you, Deputy Mayor Post. First of all, I'd like to congratulate, uh, the Culture and Community Services for, uh, successful Butter Tart Festival, Canada Day, Music in the Park, and initiating the mural, mural festival amongst other things. And I hope that the mural festival continues and we promote it strongly, working with Crestard and the Culture Centre. And the other, uh, comment is the annual kids fishing derby. Um, the active transportation committee are hoping to be able to, well, first of all, there is a question there. Is there a, a bike rodeo at that same time? Okay.
Yes, through the Chair to Counselor McDonald, there is a bike rodeo that's run by the OPP.
Okay, so the active transportation committee has had a discussion on how we could promote active transportation more. And that we thought that being at the bike rodeo would, um, be a great opportunity. So hopefully we can work together on that. So I, may I continue with my questions now? Thank you. The boat launch challenge is due to suspension of the parking program. Do we have any plans on how to improve that?
Through the Chair to Counselor McDonald. And so when the parking program was suspended, that included the boat launch fees for the daily boat launch fees. In May, we brought a report to council to re, immediate really reinstate those, those fees. Um, because they aren't parking fees, they're boat launch fees that come with parking. And that was approved by council. It was a little late in the season. It was towards the end of May. So we did lose some of those early in the season boat launchers who were just going to launch at the beginning of the season and then take their boat at the end of the season. It did not affect those who are purchasing an annual pass. So that was not affected at all. And in terms of improvements, it'll be part of the parking study that's being conducted.
It'll probably come up during budget then. Um, the capital projects completed, this is down at the, um, dock. It, your report said there was capital projects completed and prod, still some, still under the, underway. Anyway, I didn't see the lighting of the swan in either one, that that was completed or that it was underway. And I'm wondering what the status is. It's been ongoing for a few seasons.
Through the Chair to Counselor McDonald, I'm happy to share that the work will be completed next week. Where we don't, on the LEDs, which should arrive at the end of this week. So the work will be completed next week. I can provide a report to council and update the council next week once it's done.
That would be great. I'll even stay up till dark to see them, which won't be very late, will it? Thank you. Looking forward to that. And if I may, uh, my last question. You talk about creating an event sponsorship package, which I'm looking forward to being made aware of. And then there, you're working with third-party event organizers. So I, I would like to have a clearer picture. All right, well, should I just wait until the event pa, sponsorship package? I guess I'm asking you to clarify for me the difference.
Through the Chair to Counselor McDonald, the event sponsorship package is when the town, for all of our events, we seek sponsors to help offset some of the costs. For example, for the Butter Tart Festival, we did it for the Mira's Golf Tournament, do it for Music in the Park. So we're putting that package together so that we're ready to go to businesses and corporations, asking them to support our events. It's for town events only, not for third-party events. Um, the report, when it mentioned that we're continuing to work with third-party events, that's, we're receiving their applications. We're reviewing their applications, making sure that it's an appropriate event to take place on municipal property and that it can safely do so. If we have any concerns, we'll certainly work with the event organizer to, um, answer any questions that they have. But that's, that's the difference between the two.
Just a follow-up. So, and I've asked this before, and obviously it's just not sinking in, but I'll ask you again. How does one become a town event? How does something that we've, that somebody might consider worthwhile being sponsored or becoming a town event? How does that happen?
Through the Chair to Counselor McDonald, if a third-party event is looking for sponsorship from the town, we don't typically give a sponsorship, but they can apply to, through the community grant program for financial support or in-kind contributions. If an event no longer has the capacity, an organizer no longer has the capacity to run their event and they want the town to take it over, that would be, they'd have to request that from council and council would have to review that. We'd have to determine if we have the staff capability to do so and also the budget to do so. And if it's appropriate that the town take on this type of, whatever that event might be.
Thank you. To be continued.
Counselor Meredith.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Post. Through you. Question for, um, actually my, my question was the same as, um, Counselor McDonald's, uh, question regarding the harbor master. So you, you implied that, um, there weren't really challenges at the beginning of the year, just the challenges of, uh, of, uh, collecting revenue was the challenge because of, of the late approval by council. Is that correct?
Through the Chair to Counselor Meredith, yes, we could, because those parking fees had been suspended, they were, they were lumped in with the parking fees. There was no way for us to implement and collect them. And so therefore, that was, that was the biggest challenge for us.
Thank you. I just wanted to clear that up, just to make sure. Um, my other, my other, um, question was, um, after the budget in, uh, twenty, twenty twenty-four January, we approved security cameras for, for the boat launch and they weren't, uh, in place until late in the season. Just, just because, um, the importance of those cameras probably should have been there at the beginning of the season for, for the boaters or somewhere near the beginning, uh, not till the end. How can we, how can, how can we make sure that that doesn't happen again? Uh, because I know there was a lot of, uh, security issues down there and then we had a higher, uh, security, um, late in the season as well with the break-ins. So, uh, just wondering, are we, when we put that, um, that, um, you know, whoever we hire for security cameras and they don't deliver on time, can we not just, you know, ax them and, and go to another supplier?
Can I just clarify? Are you, you said boat, security cameras at the boat launch? Are you meaning at the harbor?
Yeah.
So through Deputy Mayor Post to, uh, Counselor Meredith. So yeah, we, for these particular cameras, we do have a, um, contract and it took a long time to, to secure the cameras and get them in place. We do them as we normally go out and, um, are able to get cameras quickly. They are in place now and we will be coming forward in this budget with other alternatives from a security standpoint as well.
Thank you. And, and that's great. I just saying when we have a contract with a security company and they do, do not deliver, deliver, um, that, that's the issue, um, kind of. Oh, you want to follow up there?
Yes, through Deputy Mayor Post, there was a manufacturing backorder is what I understand. So that's the reason why there was a delay.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Gordon.
Thanks. Uh, I'm committing a sin tonight because I'm, I'm actually having a couple texts pop on my phone from Counselor Ball, who's not able to attend with us in person, knowing she can't vote, but she is following along actively. And so me a culpa. A question that she reminded me to ask was that there, there was a, we'd approved having kind of an aggregate, you know, events website or a page for events, not just town events, but events that other people are putting on in our community would live. And I know we're going through some discussions about revamping our town website. But I was, it got me thinking about what we talked about at our MAT committee, about the Stay and Play platform that we're evaluating. That, you know, somewhere there needs to be the source of truth where all of this stuff lives. And it, it really makes sense to me, although I haven't seen the platform yet, that known, the events that are happening around town, both town-wise and ones that are submitted by, you know, uh, different organizations and, and clubs and whatnot, would live on that site. Is that, is that something we're contemplating? Um, Smiley, maybe you could just help me out with that one.
Through the Chair to Mayor Gordon, yes, we are working on building a Midland Tourism microsite. The goal of that site is to house the stay and play packages. It'll also have all the other information that we have on our main town site about our events. We'll also have a page on there where third-party events will be listed, that want to be listed. For example, some of our third-party events aren't tourism-based. They may not want to, for example, the cross-country events in the Little Lake Park. They won't be listed. They probably don't want to be. They could be on the community calendar. We've been spending the last few months running all of our events and running all of our programs. So now this is underway. We're working on it right now, figuring all the glitches and how to make it work for us. So now, this is underway, we're working on it right now, figuring all the glitches and how to make it work for us. But we expect to launch it in the next couple of months. If we do the Stay and Play packages, they won't be till spring, so we're working the next few months on that.
Think that's good, that's good to hear, because I know both Counsel McDonald and Counsel Ball, that it's very passionate about the events that are going on in town, and could be going on, and how do we promote them, both town, ones and otherwise. So that is comforting to hear, and I look forward to seeing that platform, and then it moving through into ultimate leaders of recommendation to council on subscribing to a platform like the one we saw, or the one we saw. So, it's coming soon. So rest in peace, not literally, but we'll just let you keep watching the movie, the meeting, and hopefully I've addressed your concern.
Counsel Meritus.
Yeah, thank you Deputy Mayor Post. Just a quick thanks to the Culture and Tourism team with everything that went on this year. Butter Tart, the new Miro Festival, which will, I'm sure will gain some traction in years to come. Also looking forward to the Tall Ships this year, which, so it should be a busy 2025 for Midland. So, thanks again for all your work, thanks.
Saying no further questions or comments, you've heard the motion to be received for information. All in favor? That's carried. Onto 12.3 CSR 2024-102, RFP Plan 2024-038, Midland Bay Landing Consultant Phase 1. The Staff Report CSR 2024-103, RFP Plan 2024-038, Midland Bay Landing Consultant Phase 1 dated November 6, 2024, be received for information. Could I have a mover and a seconder to put on the floor? Mayor Gordon? And Counsel Patel? Open the floor for questions or comments? Counsel Meritus.
Setting the theme here.
Counsel McDonald.
I apologize. I did pull this report because of the importance of it, that it will ensure that the development of prime waterfront property provides a positive and long-lasting impact to the residents of the town of Midland. That's a pretty important statement, so I just have two simple questions. The award of the contract to KPMG for almost $200,000, is that in the 2024 budget?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, it is in the budget, yes.
2024, so we already approved that. Thank you, that's reassuring. And then the KPMG, to have the developer onboard by April 2026. How firm is that date in the request for proposal? And is there a penalty if that date is not met?
Through you, Madam Chair, it's, there's no penalty if we don't meet it. It's a target that we've established with the consultant. We've already started work, we had our kickoff meeting last week with the consultant, so we're already starting to get work on it. The goal is for them to be able to attract a developer by that date, and then us have a developer or developers onboard. So it's a target for us to get to, but there is no penalty if we're not able to get it. The plan is to hopefully get a developer onboard before this council goes into lame duck for elections. So that way, we're moving the project forward even when the new council comes onboard, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Meritus.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Post, actually Catherine McDonald, your question answered my question, so the other question I had is, who's on the committee? Who's the staff that are on the committee for the Midland Bay Landing?
Through you, Madam Chair, the, for staff, it'll be in these initial kickoff meetings. It's myself, Mr. Sobel, Ms. Barron, Ms. Bun, Mr. Wiersba, and Ms. Clark as well. So we're having those kickoff meetings with them, and then there will also be an opportunity for council to meet with consultant as well, and then the public also will be engaged as well. So there's lots of opportunity to make sure we get input from everybody, to make sure that when we do form that Phase 2 of this RFP to attract a developer, we do it right, and we make sure we get everybody's input, and then we frame it a certain way so that we can attract as many developers and potential that, to develop this. As Counsel McDonald said, it's a very important piece of property on our waterfront, thank you.
And just one more question, is there a timeline on this RFP? Is there a closing date on this RFP?
So through you, Madam Chair, the RFP is closed for this Phase 1. So the Phase 1 was what was to select somebody to help us with this RFP. Then the Phase 2 RFP, that's what KPMG is going to help us do, is they're going to help us create that larger RFP and then send it out. So this one here with them is now closed, and now we're going to work towards getting the next steps, going to develop that Phase 2 RFP, which will go out later in the year, in 2025.
Okay, great, yeah, so I guess I didn't answer to ask that properly. I guess for KPMG's timeline, to get this out for the RFP, is there a timeline?
So through you, Madam Chair, we just had our first kickoff meeting. So they had given us their Gantt chart and kind of their milestones, but that's going to be further refined as we have our meetings with them. I think we're going to look into probably the next couple of weeks to have our next meeting with them for our visioning session, and then it'll then filter down, and they'll be able to modify their chart. So we should have an idea as to, you know, locking kind of that Gantt chart in. It'll still be very fluid, because there will be some things that will move, but once we have that, we will be providing council regular updates on this as we move forward.
Great, thank you, and I'm not trying to rush anything, and we need to get this right. So, thank you very much.
Mayor Gordon.
Thanks, I'm so happy this is here now. We're about nine, in my, you know, master plan that I tried to lay out, both pre-election and then post-election with my wonderful council support, I feel like we're about nine months behind what my plan was for timelines, and quite frankly, it's because we lost two of our council members. You know, which is a setback, not only because we lost two council members, but then we need to go through the process of filling those seats. And it's hard to just keep all the plates spinning, or the chainsaws, as it were, while also doing that. So Midland Bay Landing, being so critical, wasn't one of the things we wanted to take our risk with. So that's why it's a little bit more delayed. The timeline now is pretty aggressive, because we have about a year and a half left till we go, you know, rubber chicken, and we can't make any decisions. And so what we really want to do is get the pre-planning done, the stakeholder engagement, which in English means public meetings, right? Those long-promised public meetings, they're happening. So get that, so there'll be what staff has inputs about this RFP needs to be. Council, we're going to have our opportunity to meet with KPMG and provide our inputs. I haven't met with them yet, just to be clear, I'm not part of the pre-planning, I'm doing it with you guys. And then it's going to be the public, and all of that's going to inform what the RFP needs to look like. They're going to craft it, I hope, in record time, and have it hit the, you know, hit the world, because it has to be available everywhere. We have to leave it out for the right amount of time that's prescribed for these kind of large things. And while it's out, we're going to be calling every developer, whoever sniffed around and said, "Hey, when you do this again, get ahold of us," believe me, I will be. And I'm hoping that we're going to turn up with, you know, more than three that have interest in this. This is not a cheap endeavor, something of this magnitude never is. And you can look at, you know, just look at what happened to Westega Beach, right? They had it all nailed down with the three-letter company, I'm not going to shame them here, because I don't know what the whole deal was, but, or it was actually four letters. But anyway, they made the agreement to do the deal, and then they nickled and dimed, it had something to do with finances, and it fell apart. So that could still happen to us, but I'm hoping it doesn't. We're going to try and do lessons learned, best practices, we do talk to our peers. So the goal is, we got a year and a half to get this right. Get the stakeholder engagement, AKA public meetings. Make the plan on what we'd like to see for that amazing piece of property. Whilst still parkifying the east side, that to me is personally non-negotiable, because that was a promise that I don't tend to go back on. And don't forget, we got $5 million if we don't go back on that. Pledge to help us parkify it, so part of the design, when I get my little meeting with KPMG, is reminding them of that east side, and how sacred that is to our residents, and 1,100 meters of contiguous shoreline access. I'm sure they're going to hear that from all of you, and many people in public. So, this is the kickoff, this is all going to happen in the public forum. Last time, we had a development corporation that just the mayor and deputy mayor were privy to, as well as some talented volunteers from our community, or quasi-volunteers. You know, not even from our community, it was a really talented pool, and they were working, you know, outside of council, doing it separately, which caused a lot of people undue suspicion, you know, that it wasn't transparent, we didn't feel transparent, and that council didn't really know what was going on unless you were me, or in this case, you know, the deputy mayor. We're not doing that at this time. We're doing this in as much public open forum as we can. Obviously, there'll have to be a couple of in-camera meetings when we're talking about selections and money, and that kind of stuff, but everything else is going to be in the public forum, so the whole community can have a hand, again, in planning what this thing looks like. And then hopefully, when we bait the hook and put it out for RFP, that we get, you know, a school of fish that are interested in our amazing, one-of-a-kind waterfront 40-acre development. So, super happy to see this report, I know we're just receiving information, but for the public, that sometimes if you hadn't pulled this, you know, whoever pulled it, Counsel McDonald, thank you. If you hadn't pulled it, it would have just been one of these things we all know about, but the media may not have picked up on it, and then the public in turn would think that we're still stuck in full neutral when it comes to this amazing economic development opportunity we have in this waterfront, so. I'm stoked, in case you hadn't guessed, and glad that the process is kicking off, and I can't wait to have our meetings with KPMG, and then get the public involved and get this thing out to bid.
Okay, council, you've heard the motion to be received for information, all in favor? Carried, unanimous? Hey, we're on to 12.4. Staff Report CSR-2024-105 Heritage Street Signage Dollar Town dated November 6, 2024, be received, and that council authorized the purchase of 77 historic Dollar Town street signs in accordance with Design Option D of Attachment Number 2, I'm assuming everything's here. And that council authorized the transfer of $2,827 from the Heritage Committee reserves for the purchase of the historic Dollar Town street signs, and that council direct operation staff to install the historic Dollar Town street signs along and within the boundary of historic Dollar Town, sorry, Dollar Town, at no cost to the Midland Heritage Committee as per street sign location map in Attachment 3. That's kind of hard when it's not up on the screen for people to see, but I know council has seen this, and could I have a mover and a seconder to put on the floor? Counsel East? Counsel Bald, or Counsel Major? Okay. Actually, can I ask Thomas, do you want to go to the podium if there's any questions, or we need any answers to anything that comes up?
Through you, Madam Chair, I can do.
You're fine right there, okay. So it's open for any questions or discussion. Counsel McDonald.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Post. I had this report pulled. Well, I guess my biggest question was, the report actually said ad hoc, or the Heritage Committee had an ad hoc engagement with residents, and many indicated support. So my question has been answered by the Chair of the Heritage Street Signage, but I think it should be answered again. Were there any opposed to the actual signs?
Through you, Madam Chair, no, I did not receive any correspondence or any information from the Chair or the Heritage Committee that there was any opposition to the project.
Okay, and then I have two more questions. One is obvious, but to, when it was pointed out to me, but I was curious why they chose Option 4.
Through you, Madam Chair, I think there's a two-part answer to that. Number one is, if I could show
Please do.
of council what these look like. These are the proposed signs from Option 4, and you'll see that the signs actually, the blue at the bottom mimics our existing signs. So that was one part of the reason why this option was chosen. The other option was just aesthetics, this is the preferred visual design that the committee had chosen.
The very, well, first of all, maybe somebody could address, this wasn't one of my questions that I sent in, but the Dollar Town history was new to me, so that's going to be explained to the citizens of Midland when the signs go up, I suspect. But my last question is, we have, we received a report in Municipal Addressing Bylaw and Manual Update, and there was no, is the Heritage Street signage referred to in that report?
Through you, Madam Chair, no. This, the manual is, I would say, an administrative update to an existing document, where we're just improving an existing process. This staff report about the historic Dollar Town signage is, all we're doing is replacing existing signs with existing approved names. So the two staff reports have similar topics, but they're not related to each other, and there's no real cross-between at this time between the two.
Thank you, thank you to the Heritage Committee.
Counsel Patel.
Thank you Deputy, so I had the pleasure to speak to Mr. Hacksetter, was it, I believe, yesterday, but maybe he can give us some more depth on why we're doing this? Because he gave me a lesson, but maybe the public and the staff would be more aware of why we're doing this. And personally, I thought aesthetically, having the white top and the blue bottom does make sense as a signage, thank you.
Your worship, Mayor Gordon, Deputy Mayor Post, council, and staff, thank you for allowing me to speak to this briefly, I hope. Dollar Town was a separately described town of 800 people about 1904, when there were 3,200 people in Midland. It actually had a defined area, and if, I think in the staff report you may see from some years ago when previous planners had defined the boundaries. And I want to thank the staff and the committee, of course, because originally, we had a rather modest proposal, which was to have four signs, right-angle signs on four corners, and staff had recommended, once you're in the middle of Dollar Town, how do you know you're there? So they've suggested and proposed that we have 77 signs, which we're very grateful for. Dollar Town, Robert Dollar and John Dollar were the, a couple of the lumber barons, so to speak, along with Playfair and the Chu family. And Dollar Town was a distinct area, which has not been sufficiently celebrated to my mind. And we felt as a committee, of the Heritage Committee, that we should give it recognition. Some of you may know that in Toronto, back in the late 60s, they did Historic Cabbage Town, which was the eastern part of Toronto, around Parliament Street. What they did is their Heritage Committee had put the same thing, they'd done signs like that, and it had tremendous What they did is their Heritage Committee had put the same thing, they'd done signs like that, and it had tremendous traction. It garnered a lot of questions. This will obviously garner questions. What's this all about? We are hoping at eventually to put a downtown Dollar Town sign, which is roughly Lindsay and Bay. To put a sign somewhat, not like the blue sign from the province, but something like a querty code or a, a sign that says, tells the story of Dollar Town. And we hope that this will stimulate a number of things. One of them is, of course, town pride or pride of an area. There is no, this is not a defined heritage district. It's actually just the recognition of an historic district that has always been there. And I hope that if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll just continue to ramble endlessly.
Yes, Counselor East.
Hello? My check one, two. So maybe we could work with Karen and the Town of Midland website so that we could actually educate our residents and anybody that has interest in following up on that. I didn't know that as well. So, I mean, I love education. The knowledge is wonderful. So I don't know if we can work in coordination with Karen just to have some sort of an offsite to the Midland website, just to educate our community on what Dollar Town is. Looks great. Thank you.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor Post, Counselor East. I'd be happy to send Karen anything that I have on file, a little inundator with information. Actually, I have a binder here full of material of everything that has a reference to Dollar Town. One of those early references was in the 20s. There were shops in Dollar Town that we, that people are not aware of. I've got, I can pass things around if anyone wants to see it at a later date, but I, I think our best bet would be for me to email things to Karen, if I may. And I will certainly do that and support that effort.
Counselor Meredith.
Just a quick comment. Thank you for the history lesson, Mr. Haxetter, and thank you to the Heritage Committee, town staff for producing such, you know, a great-looking sign. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing me to be present to address this.
Mayor Gordon.
Yeah, I also want to thank the Heritage Committee for their hard work. This has been a long time coming. You know, then we had a little gap or hiccup where our Heritage Committee kind of imploded. It's hard always to find the volunteers who dedicate the, the time, on their own time, to meet and to come up with these, these on their own. This wasn't something council dictated. This is something that our Heritage Committee came up with. So it was awesome to see it rekindled as we restructured and got our Heritage Committee back online. And this is a lot of work over many, many years and it's great to, I mean, there it is right in front of us. It's going to be awesome. I volunteer to hold the ladder as you climb up and bolt this on for the media when it's time to install. Just building on Counselor East's question about, you know, preserving the story and being able to tell a story about Dollar Town on our website. You and I have had a couple of conversations about another little side project that I'd like to, to ask the, you know, the Heritage Committee to undergo on its own without, you know, being a council directive. And that is to help tell the story about all the amazing places we've named, including the, there'll be a sign we're going to be unveiling very shortly, Fred Flood Way, Gore Diamond Field. And the issue is, as time goes on and people pass away and, you know, get new people into our community that just don't have the history here yet. There, a lot of them are left scratching their head on, why is the, why is, what's the park name? Why is the park called this? You know, who is, who is this Pete Pedersen guy and how do you even pronounce his name and what's the deal there? So one of the things I'd love to see the Heritage Committee undertake, if you guys would like to, would be to start to, to find all and identify with staff all the things that we've named over, you know, time immemorial. And put together a little story on the backstory on it. And then we, perhaps we could even fix a little QR code or something, you know, for the people that can figure out what to do with their phone with it. And it could take people to our site or the museum site, whoever ends up being the source of truth of this. And we could start to tell the story about all the amazing names and people who make up, without us even knowing, the fabric of the, the naming of areas of significant recreation in our community. So this is a very visible first step and I'd love to see it built on because I'm, I'm sure even us sitting up here, there's a lot of names on parks and other facilities and this way and that road that some of us may not be aware even who these people are or their story. Or we may have an incorrect assumption. So preserving that history, you know, hometown pride, pride is definitely something that is within the bailiwick of our, of our wonderful Heritage Committee. So just a little, something we've talked about informally. I'm just throwing it out here, you know, right now more publicly. And this is awesome and I, as again, I'm happy to hold the ladder for you or vice versa, whatever you want to do whenever we're going to do the photo op and get this thing installed. So thank you very much.
CIO Bun.
Thank you through Deputy Mayor Post. If I could ask actually if Mr. Haxetter would mind sending the documents to Tomas and he could actually compile them, but thank you very much.
Counselor Major, then Counselor Bald.
I want to congratulate the Heritage Committee, the staff and Rennie. So I grew up here and I think when we were kids, I probably had no idea what Dollar Town really meant. It was just some part of town where we used to go down and play road hockey. But anyways, my suggestion is there's a walkway on Aberdeen down by TRW and maybe along Bay Shore where people are walking. Like you want to put Lindsay and Bay Street, but there's not enough people walking. If we had the, the history of the Dollar Town, like on Bay Shore where you walk along and it got the, so it'd be pretty cool for people walking that could, that could read up about Dollar Town. And there's a little parket by Bay and Aberdeen where a lot of people walk by. So that'd be my two places to put information about it, but a job well done.
Counselor Bald.
Thank you very much. Mr. Haxetter, I, I think that I would like to talk about JW Bald and Mr. Hanley and Mr. Manley. I have a lot of information. So let's, let's get together. All right. Thank you.
Well, that was good conversation. Any further comments or questions? Well, this is, this is great. I'm, I'm really excited to see this go up and learn much more history than I ever thought that I would. So council, you've heard the motion. All in favor? Unanimous, that's carried. Okay, we're down to number 13. Notices of motion. Do we have any notices of motion? Counselor East.
Thank you through you Deputy Mayor Post. My motion is that council consider collaborating with the Legion in painting a memorial crosswalk to the Senataf. And that staff provide a report detailing the feasibility and costs for this crosswalk.
Thank you, Counselor East. I have a notice of motion. Do I hand this over to Mayor Gordon? Okay. I didn't write mine out, but mine's pretty simple. I would like this term of council and staff to maybe locate a location where a tree could be planted in honor of our Deputy Mayor Cotton and Counselor Downer. And maybe bring that back to council at some point so that we can plant this tree together. Okay, we're on to general announcements. I know you do. Does anybody have any general announcements? Counselor Major.
So Friday, November 29th to Sunday, December 1st is Bob, the first weekend of the Bob Murkley Silver Stick Hockey Tournament Midland. And it's been running since 1972. And then the following weekend, Friday, December 6th to Sunday, December 8th is the second weekend of it. It's kind of special probably for my family because all four of our kids played in it. Like my wife was the manager on a couple of teams and three of our kids and myself repped it. So you can probably go up Friday, the 29th and Ross McConnell runs it and get it programs and see when the Midland kids are playing. Or if you move from somewhere else, see if some of the, wherever you came from, there's teams that interest you. There's no admission. And it's a great weekend to go up and hang out at the rink and watch some really good hockey, especially the last day when the finals, lots of them go into overtime. So I hope to see a bunch of people up at the rink. Thanks.
Counselor East.
I'm sure that Bill will speak on this, but yesterday we hosted the Splash Pad Public Forum. I just wanted to personally thank our staff and Mitch. It was great. It was interactive. I loved how you were able to bring our community together specifically on different areas of Midland where they wanted to see it. And it was great to have the feedback on it. I know Angela really was adamant about it and what was the other gentleman that passed away? Harvey Mann. I know that their hearts are in it as well as a lot of our council. So I just wanted to personally thank you, our staff and everybody that was involved in such a great presentation. I'm sure you'll speak more on it. The other thing that I'm sure you'll speak as well is Remembrance Day, but I'll let you speak because you're so great at it.
Any further announcements? Seeing none. Mayor Gordon.
All right, just a second. I'm going to put my head back so it doesn't explode. No, I think any of us, any of us could do the shuttle for Remembrance Day, but of course, it's a really big day in our community. It's a big day for remembrance and thankfulness. And, you know, obviously I'll have some words to share that day along with many other dignitaries that attend our Senataf. But this is again, an invitation to all of our townsfolk, young and old. Please, please, please come out and join us at the Senataf. Dress for the weather. Bring a lawn chair if you need one, you know, because there is some standing involved. And it's great to see the kids out there and the cadets. It's just such an awesome gathering we have. And unfortunately, our number of our veterans is dwindling. But, you know, we need to keep doing this, you know, just for the simple phrase, lest we forget. We have to be there. We have to keep doing this. This is one of many ways we, we thank our veterans for their service and recognize the ultimate sacrifice paid by so many for the freedoms we enjoy today. Our drumhead services that happen twice a year. This is the big one. The other thing you can do is get a poppy and wear a poppy. And if it falls off, it's by design because you're supposed to end up buying more than one. That's kind of the way this is structured. So get poppies wherever you can and proudly wear them right up to the 11th and please join us 10:30 a.m. at the Senataf. We'll have the road shut down so we don't have all the loud trucks and exhausts and stuff interrupting the process. The pipes and drums will be there. There'll be a parade after right down to the Legion. And then there's a really nice Remembrance Day dinner in the evening at 6 o'clock where again, I'll bring greetings on behalf of the town for all the folks at Royal Canadiens Union Number Eighty, Branch Eighty. Second thing happening this week, though I'm going to shut it. I mean, there's always stuff on my calendar, but Kathy Willis, who's the recipient of our Order of Merit. And I think most people know her as being, it feels like single-handedly guiding the, the shelter for women in our community and of course, Operation Grow. But we know there's so many people that contributed along with it, but she's kind of, you know, it's, I can't think of those amazing facilities in our community that we wish we didn't need, quite frankly, especially during Intimate Partner Violence Month. But the reality is that Kathy Willis is finally retiring. You know, I'm sure that's a soft retirement with a little R. She's, people like her are like serial entrepreneurs and just keep working. But her, she's retiring on Tuesday, the 12th. And they're having a get-together at Operation Grow at 6 p.m. So if you hadn't heard about this yet and you wanted to pop by and shake your head and thank her for all the amazing stuff and wish her great luck in retirement, that's happening at, at Operation Grow. And of course, I'll be attending that. And then last but not least, less. No, no, I'm not, I'm not, because I talk a lot already and I've already probably used my quota. So I'm going to pass along something really important happening on the 14th to Counselor McDonald. I know this is, it's near and dear to all of us, but to be fair, you know, she was like really pushing for this round two and I want to let her talk about it and promote it and I sure hope to see you all there. So I will yield the mic to Counselor McDonald.
Thank you very much. It is the second symposium. Hope and Home Health and, no, Hope and Home Health. And it is there to have the, and we worked in conjunction or in collaboration with the Legion, not the Legion, good Lord, see, you should have done this, with the library. And they're offering an afternoon session from three to five. Prior to that, there, the service agencies have been invited and they will be speaking to each other, saying this is a service we provide. And, and trying to determine where, where the links are and where the silos are and to work together to better improve or to improve our service delivery for the most vulnerable in our community. And then in the evening, there's a panel expert that will be available to answer some questions. And the service providers' displays will still be there and available to answer questions as well. So that is on the 14th. It's a Thursday and it's at the Simcoe, North Simcoe, at the rec center. So please try and join us and help us find a solution, a community solution. And if you have anything to add, please do. Hope to see everyone there.
Okay, so on to 50. Oh. Our mayor has one more.
Yeah, I forgot about this. I, I didn't want to occupy too much time, but then that's what I do sometimes. Now I can't find my Outlook. Because I want to get the date right. Sorry, one second. I had my calendar up. Oh, my goodness. There's retirements. Retirements abound. Yes, this one is another big deal. This is, we don't have another meeting till December, so that's why I'm kind of jumping into the calendar a bit deeper. On the 22nd, Friday, the 22nd, Judy Cotton is retiring, if you can imagine, from Askinonia. And it's been like three decades or more of service, working tirelessly, supporting and growing Askinonia with her amazing team, and she's passing the torch. I think Blair's taken over for her, but there's a, there's a shindig happening at Askinonia on Friday at 2 o'clock. So if you want to come again and do some well-wishing for Judy, our town crier, and of course, beloved wife of our former Deputy Mayor Cotton, please feel free to join. And I'm sure the invite's all over social media, but now everyone's on that. So Friday, the 22nd, put it on your calendar, 2 o'clock, Askinonia. And now I'm looking at that week. There's all kinds of stuff. The Honor of the Veterans Lunch at noon on the 19th. I could go on all day. There's a lot of stuff happening in November, culminating with ultimately the Christmas tree lighting on the 29th down at the BIA. Oops, sorry. Nope. Nope, didn't mean to steal that. And then, of course, the big guy, Santa, his parade is the next day. And, and after the parade, you know, there's actually an art, an artisan Christmas gift thing going on at MCC through the art gallery, Quest Art. So I'll be there, you know, helping to flog stuff and whatever I do, whatever they want me to do, I'm there after the parade. There's a lot going on in November. So clear your calendars, everybody. Don't leave town. And there's just, if you want to know what else is happening, get ahold of any of your counselors. We all know what's going on around here. And I should really let Counselor Meredith talk to the BIA event because BIA is doing amazing stuff downtown as you saw with the banners and everything. So I'm going to pass it over to him, even if you hadn't planned to do it.
No, and what's, thank you, Mayor Gordon. What sparked me is a, I thought we had another meeting at the, just before the Christmas tree lighting. So looked at my calendar and it's not till December. So yes, the 29th, Friday, the 29th, the downtown Midland. So yes, the 29th, Friday, the 29th, the downtown Midland BIA Christmas Tree Lighting, always a great hit with the kids and adults. Come down, get some free hot chocolate. It's been growing, the event has been growing every year, and we have some new light displays going up as well, so it should be a fun night, and hopefully the weather stays like it is right now. Shorts, shorts, shorts and t-shirts, hopefully. Thank you. And are we singing well? I was caught last, last year on a run for hot chocolate, so I got out of this singing. So hopefully that happens again. So, yeah, you don't want to hear me sing, but the 29th, for sure, downtown Midland, Christmas Tree Lighting.
Counselor Patel.
I just wanted to state an important thing, I guess. It's Movember, that's why I got the mustache. Mr. Ferguson approved it, so my son forced it, and my wife thinks someone else has moved into the house, is not leaving.
Any more announcements?
Sure. So Movember is to educate, I guess, the world on men's mental health, because everybody thinks that men aren't supposed to cry or show emotions or allowed to have emotions. So many moons ago, it was brought up that we could signify men's mental health. I won't be going one of those things, but yeah, thank you, Jazz, and I hope I said it correctly.
Well, there's, there's more to it than that, too. You're right. It's testicular cancer, prostate cancer, and encouraging men to go get the, get the check with the doctor. Nobody likes doing it. The doctor doesn't like it. The dudes don't like it. We try and talk about something else while it's happening, but it pales by comparison to what, you know, women have to go through with their medical checkups. So do it once a year, get it over with, because early detection makes it very survivable. So just, that's the awkward, weird part of the whole Movember bit, but anyway, and I had to start growing this mess early, because I can't grow facial hair very well, so this is like three weeks of it. Apparently, Counselor Patel just started this morning. So, anyway, I'll be hacking this off at the end of November, and we can all laugh again, but it's a serious topic, and thanks for bringing it up, and it is tied in with health, mental health, and the whole, the whole bit, so there we go.
I apologize, I'm not laughing at that, I'm actually laughing with Counselor Patel and his poor wife. I do have a motion here, moved by Counselor Meredith, seconded by Counselor Major, that the Committee of the Whole rise and report. All in favor? That's carried. Before I hand this over to Mayor Gordon, can I request a five or seven-minute bio break, please? Thank you.
All right, 7:56, we'll resume at 8:00. Sorry. That's four minutes, yeah. Trot fast. Okay, so I should have actually gone with Deputy Mayor Prost's recommendation for the break, because it's now 8:06, and I said 8:00 would be left, but if you're in TV land, you won't know the difference. So, oh, it was a lineup. Oh, my goodness, well, we should have called it earlier. All right. Anywho, we're back. So I have a motion here, moved by Counselor Meredith, seconded by Counselor East, that the recommendations that Committee of the Whole for the meeting of November 6, 2024, be adopted as resolutions at council. All is in favor? Any opposed? Aye. All righty, now we're at the motions for which notice was given, and we have a plethora of them tonight. So I will start with, I need a seconder for Counselor McDonald's motion, I got one, a seconder and Counselor East. Thank you. Now, usually, I read these things out, put them on the floor, but this is Counselor McDonald's motion, it's rather wordy, and would you like to read it, or would you like me to? Sometimes, when it's your motion, you like to read it. I'm good either way.
I'll give you a break and read it for you. Thank you for the opportunity. This motion states, whereas in Ontario, according to the Highway Traffic Act, the statutory speed limit in urban areas is 50 kilometers per hour, when there is no posted speed limit, and whereas many communities across Ontario typically lower speed limits down to 40 kilometers an hour on local streets. However, there is a further push for, by transportation and health officials, to reduce the speed on local streets down to 30 kilometers. The rationale behind this is that research demonstrates that vehicle pedestrian collisions begin to result, begin to result in significant more injuries or fatalities when they improve, when they involve speed above 30 kilometers. And whereas adopting a town-wide standard provides predictability for drivers in knowing what is the speed limit of a given street, and whereas a speed limit reduction is relatively quick and affordable way to reduce traffic-related injuries and fatalities, and whereas Midland Transportation Master Plan recommends a study, now therefore, be it resolved, that staff be directed to provide a report and recommendations to council regarding lowering the speed limit throughout Town of Midland, including an evaluation plan, the cost of changing existing signage on streets, and adding new signage. So I'm hoping the council will support, at least to have a report come back to us.
Yeah, I'm just, I have a question here. So is this report to reduce to 30, or is it to 40 kilometers? I think it's 30 kilometers in the whole Town of Midland. Is that correct?
It's not recommending either 40, it is definitely recommending 40, and the feasibility of 30.
Thank you. And then, in the, in the transportation master plan, the study, is that going to, is that going to be involved in this? Or are they recommending, it's already been, is it in the master plan, in the study?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Sopel.
Yeah, through you, Mayor Gordon, to Counselor Meredith. So a speed reduction is talked about at a really high level in the transfer, existing transportation master plan. It does reference that if it's something that we would like to look into, it's recommended that, you know, further study on specific that topic should be done. Doesn't specify whether that's third-party with consultant or staff level.
I've got some thoughts to share, but I need to try and go last. Deputy Mayor?
I just want to clarify, 40, lowering the speed to 40 kilometers has already come to council, so that's off the table right off the bat. Is that correct?
Through you to Deputy Mayor Prost. Yes, in January of 2023, Counselor Downer had proposed a motion to reduce the speed to 40. There was a recorded vote, and the motion was defeated. So therefore, we couldn't recommend that the speed limit be reduced to 40, as it would be considered a reconsideration.
How, this term or this year?
Through you to Counselor McDonald, excuse me, this term.
So there's no use bringing forward a, a report if we can't act on it?
Through you, Chair Gordon, to Counselor McDonald. The motion to have staff prepare a report would be fine. The original motion did not request a report from staff, it simply requested a reduction of speed to 40 on the interior roads, and then 50 on the, I'm not sure of the verbiage, yeah, collector and arterial roads.
Perhaps I must have been there, and I probably, I don't, I probably voted against it or whatever, but I'm going to withdraw this motion, because there's no use having them do a report if we can't act on it this term. I guess if I want to be, that's, I apologize for not being made aware of this, for not remembering.
Okay, so I'm going to throw you a Hail Mary. So to be fair, we can revisit one time, we just can't keep revisiting over and over again. I'll use the example of Lakeside, Lake Shore Drive, whatever, the little postage stamp, right? We did it twice, we're not going to do it a third time. Not just because we said we wouldn't, because our policy doesn't allow us. If council decides to get this report, and if the recommendation option, which I'm sure it would, and come back saying, we could reduce it to 40 townwide, because nothing stops us, then to make things tidy, we could get a two-thirds majority to agree to revisit what we already voted against, and look at it again, if you want to go through that process. So just, I don't want to let all the wind out of your sails and not tell you this, there is a way to do this, if you'd like to pursue it.
Well, then I would like to pursue it on, and see what comes forward, but I have to have the support of the council, so I'm only going to vote.
Counselor Meredith?
Yeah, thank you, through Mayor Gordon. I don't think I, I'm not sure about anybody else, but a report to, for staff time to come back with a report to convince us, or give us the stats or the data, to reduce it to 40 or 30 or so forth, I don't think, sitting in my chair, I don't think I need that report. I think I would know if I, you know, without looking at the report, whether I'm for it or against it. So I'm just trying to save some staff time here. And we could either, I guess, the major thing for me would be the costing of it, right? And the timeframe, or do we, do we phase it in over, you know, two or three years, or I'm not sure. But anyways, I don't think I, we need a lengthy report, that's all I'm getting at, for me to make a decision on this anyways, so I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
So if this was something that we were going to consider tonight, I just, I kind of want to be clear, so it could be down to 40, would that be on res, no?
The motion's just to have staff return with a study with options for us? Not, we're not, we wouldn't actually be making a decision to change any street speeds tonight.
Okay, thank you.
The predicament is, you know, we get this report back, and one of the options is to reduce it to 40, we need to get two-thirds majority to revisit that, because we already kiboshed that one. So that's the, the akey part. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. Also, procedurally, the motion is on the floor, it has a mover and seconder, so you really do need to deal with this motion at this time. The reason we had accepted it is there wasn't a specific reduction, because there is a gray area where I did consider if it was a motion to reconsider, it was the staff report portion, but council can have that conversation, and Counselor McDonald has already mentioned that she could withdraw the motion, or you could vote on the motion, whether you approve it, defeat it, it's up to council, but the motion is on the floor, so you have to deal with it.
And Deputy Mayor?
Okay, so we could also alter it a little bit, too, right? If it was 40 in residential and 50 on our main roads? Or is that not possible?
Mayor Gordon, through to Deputy Mayor Prost. It wouldn't be possible without a motion to reconsider, but that should have been done before this motion, because we've already had a motion to reduce it from 40, or from 50 to 40, and it was defeated. It was a recorded vote, and Counselor McDonald's correct, she did not support it, so it was defeated in January of 2023.
Okay, so can we backtrack and do a motion to reconsider? Or what would Counselor McDonald like to do?
The report might come back to us and say, no, keep it at 50, then we wouldn't have to reconsider, reconsider, correct? I would like to just vote on it, if the majority want to revisit, well, once we get the report, then we reconsider, go for the revisit of it then. The report arrives to us, it says, yes, 40 kilometers is a good idea for Midland, then we would pass, we would have to ask for a motion to revisit reducing the speed limit. I think that, yeah, there was no report that supported the motion previously, which it was, does that make sense?
Mayor Gordon, through to Counselor McDonald. Your motion doesn't specify the speed that you want it to be reduced at, which is why initially I didn't say it was a motion to reconsider, but in listening to the Act of Transportation and the conversation, it sounds like you, the intent was 40, but that wasn't clear in the motion that you presented. What we could do, if you decided not to withdraw this motion, is direct staff to prepare a report about lowering the speed limit, but they could not recommend 40. So it would either be probably 30, I guess. Or 20.
Maybe I can help uncomplicate this to some degree, because the report, but I don't anticipate the report looking a lot different than our current traffic calming policy. So we review that on page 51, section 1.3 reads, and I, it's rather brief, so I'll just read it, because I think it's germane to what we're talking about. What is traffic calming, question mark? Traffic calming is a term, actually, sorry, I'm going to go to 1.2. What is not traffic calming? Because that's actually more germane to this. Over the past 30 years, this is staff reported, forms part of our traffic calming policy. Over the past 30 years, there have been significant amount of knowledge gained through the implementation of successful projects to determine what traffic calming measures work, and which traffic calming measures are not effective. The always stop, comma, 40 kilometers per hour reduced speed zone, comma, children at play signs, comma, that one's for Counselor Ball, because I know we both loved it when we saw it a day ago. Posted speed signs, comma, rumble strips, and speed bumps, which I happen to like, are all devices commonly mistaken for being traffic calming tools. In some cases, these devices do not work to calm traffic for the reasons listed below. I'm going to skip the part that talks about unwarranted always stops, because we've already set that aside a couple times and just, you know, done it. But the 40-kilometer-hour speed zone is germane to what we're talking about, and the bullet point points read simply, one, that people travel at a speed they feel comfortable based on the environment through which they are driving, regardless of the posted speed limit. Two, compliance with an artificially reduced speed is only achieved with consistent and visible police enforcement, a resource which is not always available, and I would argue is virtually unavailable in our community, just because they're busy doing other stuff, which is why we're looking at automated speed enforcement. The third bullet point says collisions, when they occur, can be more significant due to the differences in speed between vehicles. So you got the guy doing the speed limit, and the guy who's not doing the speed limit, kabam. Pedestrians is the next bullet point. Pedestrians may perceive the roadway to be safer due to the reduced speed limit, which is a false sense of security. And lastly, this false sense of security may lead pedestrians that are crossing the roadway to not be as cautious as they would be otherwise, knowing that if they're struck by a slower-moving vehicle, they're more likely to shake it off, as it were. So we have this, the study's being done, the policy was implemented, and this is, this exists. So I don't know that I see the merit in sending back the same question to staff, having them revisit what's already in a live policy with evidence that says 40, although I'm not, would never argue that I would, I would rather be hit by a car doing 40 than 50, 100%, guaranteed. But, that being said, it's, it isn't everything that one believes it can be, and this is part of what staff have already produced for us, and that we've adopted, and it's been a living document for, and in place for, whatever, it's been six years now, five years, four years, four years, yeah, okay. So I don't know, like, I personally, as much as I appreciate, and I don't disagree with the science, that the Act of Transportation forwarded, I think we've addressed that in our traffic calming policy. I think we've addressed that in our traffic calming policy. We have a process in place. Add on to that the complication that we've already defeated sort of an arbitrary, you know, without any science reduction of to 40 this term, which complicates us revisiting it. Not impossible, but it complicates it. And the fact that it's already in this policy and report that it isn't as effective as we're led to believe it is. So I wouldn't support this because A, I value the staff's time right now. I know we're running kind of thin and we have this monster budget. We're asking them to find millions of dollars in savings. I just think time could be better spent, not dismissing the hard work or the science that was presented to us from Act of Transportation. But that we have already contemplated that and that at the moment we're dealing with ad hoc one-offs to reproduction of 40 in the community as there's an up, you know, an uproar basically from the residents. We do a bit of science and measurement with our speed trailer. But even in the absence of that, for example, Cook Drive, where the evidence didn't support that there was speeding. But the perception by the residents was such that it convinced us and me to support making the change. So we did. And we can always do that. So I guess from my perspective, this is a well-placed, well-meaning, but I don't know that it's going to be effective because of those complications that A, it's already addressed in the report and B, that we already defeated this this term. So it's just my thoughts, if that helps with the conversation. I think, sorry, Counselor Major, I think you had your hand up before I yacked and then we'll head over to Counselor East.
So my, to understand this right, that starting in January, Act of Transportation can come back or not till this term of council's over?
Through your worship, through to Counselor Major. Act of Transportation does have the ability to provide a delegation to council, but they wouldn't do another delegation to reduce the speed limits.
Counselor East and then Counselor Patel.
Through your worship, when I, when I read the motion, I appreciated it because I know how valuable it is to you and Jim. My one concern that I ran into and my thoughts were that for it to be successful, the amount of policing that would need to make it productive would be pulling our police resources from much needed other things like crime and so many things around the town. I would fully support it. And I love the fact that you brought it forward because I know how meaningful it is for you, but truthfully, I think that we would be pulling our OPP resources off of some really important projects that really aren't quite important. So that was my only hesitation on supporting it. And my feeling is still that I wouldn't want to take our police away from much needed policing services.
Counselor Patel.
Thank you, worship. So I want to thank Counselor McDonald for thinking about community safety and but I think our speeding camera enforcement is coming soon and that will teach drivers to not drive speeding exceeding, speeds exceeding 50 kilometers or higher. I just don't think enforcing it on our own and let drivers learn through their mistakes by paying for the fines will make our community better driver. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Okay, I'm just looking for some further clarification. So tonight, this was, this was what Mayor Gordon had suggested or mentioned that this was like a one free ticket or one. This is it. Right? That we can't come back with, with anything for reducing speed this term.
Through Mayor Gordon to Deputy Mayor Post. You could with a motion to reconsider. But as I mentioned, with this motion that was presented by Counselor McDonald, it was a bit, the lines were a bit blurred, so I wasn't exactly sure of the request. But we have already had a request to reduce the speed limit to 40, which would be with Counselor McDonald requesting that staff provide a report, they would probably use 40 kilometers as a recommendation. And because council's already defeated that, we would have needed a motion to reconsider. But we didn't do that tonight. So the motion on the floor is as Counselor McDonald has read it. So you've had discussion on the motion and council could choose to, as I said, either approve it or defeat it. Or Counselor McDonald also has the option to withdraw the motion, but it would be up to her to withdraw the motion.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't already in the point, or at the point of motion to reconsider, but that's still a possibility?
Through your worship to Deputy Mayor Post, it is a possibility in that council would have to suspend the rules because we have a motion on the floor. So technically you should be dealing with this motion only. We would have to do a motion to suspend the rules. They'd vote on that and then we'd have a motion to reconsider and then go back to this motion.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to understand that process.
And just before I go back to Counselor McDonald, because I'm sure you got lots of stuff to share there. And while we're talking about the automated speed enforcement cameras, just a reminder for the people following along, is that it doesn't replace policing. It just puts a monetary penalty to the registered owner of the speeding vehicle. So it's designed to change driving behaviors and the penalty goes to the owner of the vehicle, which isn't always the driver. That's the way that works. It also has to be in a community safety zone, which we have the power to define is what we've seen, what we do perceive to be community safety zones, and we've done that a couple of times. And school zones are automatically candidates for community safety zones. So the fines are doubled in community safety zones and school zones automatically. And as you probably know from around town, there's blinking lights during school hours where the speed limit is actually reduced in the school zone to 40, as I recall. So technically, we already have this in place in some of our most vulnerable areas in the community, which is where our little ones go to school. So, you know, we're not, that, that means the people speeding on my road on Dominion, which they do all the time, hammer down because they don't want to stop at the lights on, on Hugo. I'm not the beneficiary of speed reductions, but where it really matters for the GBDSSS and, and Bayview and whatnot, when those lights are blinking, it's already down to 40. So I just wanted to throw that context and then that there is, outside of us just making arbitrary 40 kilometer hour rules around the town because someone complains. They actually exist already in community safety zones and the school zones to a large degree around the schools. So just a little extra context for what we have versus what we're asking for. Counselor McDonald, take it away.
Thank you. Under the advisement of the clerk, I didn't realize you could with, well, I did suggest I would withdraw it, but when it's on the floor, I can withdraw the motion. I will withdraw the motion. The Act of Transportation Committee, I'm sure will find a other avenue to bring safety to the community.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon, through to Counselor McDonald. Just for a point of clarification, when you're the person putting the motion on the floor, you have that opportunity to withdraw at any time during the discussion. So, thank you.
Thank you for your guidance.
All right, so that one's kind of done. But of course, our job of trying to find ways to make the community safer for pedestrians and cyclists and automobile users, et cetera, never ends. So this isn't, I don't want this to be misinterpreted by anybody as us throwing caution to the wind and, you know, heck with it. We're always looking for new ways and we'll continue to. We have this traffic calming policy that people that are interested in how to help with traffic calming in the community, please read this policy. It's pretty good. There's things I would like to see more of, like little speed bumps. I know it's just a personal, you know, like of mine, but again, they're in here as being not overly effective. Speed cushions and other things are, they're contemplated, they just have a price tag. So nothing's off the table for us right now, except for a wholesale reduction to 40 clicks. That's basically where I would just want to leave the conversation. Okay, so we're, everything else is on the table. In the future, just that money. Okay, so scratching that one and just keeping the pace alive here. Counselor McDonald, do you have another wordy one? Would you, I need a seconder to get this on the floor. Seconder, Counselor East again? Okay, Counselor McDonald, would you like to read this one for us?
Thank you. Whereas it is apparent that the Ontario government has overlooked the need of Ontario small urban municipalities. And whereas Ontario's small urban municipalities face unsurma, unsurmountable challenges to both upfront investments and ongoing maintenance of their capital assets, including roads, water, wastewater and municipally owned buildings, including recreational facilities, libraries and other tangible capital assets. Whereas an increase of 26% one, in one year, which is a million dollars, roughly 4% tax increase for Midland and something never projected. Now there, or be it resolved, that the town of Midland call on the Ontario government to immediately implement sustainable funding for small urban municipalities by reabsorbing the cost of Ontario provincial police force backed into the provincial budget with no cost recovery to municipalities. And further, that council directs staff to circulate this resolution to Premier Doug Ford, Minister Solicitor General, General, Minister of Finance and the Association of the Municipalities of Ontario and all municipalities in Ontario. A similar resolution was passed through other different municipalities and I thought it was worthwhile for Midland to put in their concern and ask for council's support.
Counselor Merdus.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. Yeah, I am definitely in support of this motion. It's a no-brainer. So I think we have an obligation to, you know, the residents of Midland to, you know, not let this go by the wayside and keep on pressing. So I'm in full support with this.
Counselor Major.
I'm in full support of this too. And I think the more communities that send the province a letter, whether we get anything done or not, but we've got to keep our fingers crossed and hope we do.
Counselor East.
Through your worship, I fully support this motion as well.
And I support this as well because I don't think that me having a beer at a fundraiser, talking to these ministers is a replacement for a formal letter from our council and circulating that to, you know, AMO and other municipalities. They, I don't, we're not going to tell them anything new. They, they get it. But again, it's, you know, my interactions and the interactions of my peers, doing what we do lobbying in the background, doesn't replace the council resolution. So I'm fully in support of this. I, I'm, I really doubt we're ever going to see the province eating the cost of OPP and not passing things along to us. But 100% of the shots you don't take on net, don't go in. So let's, let's give it a shot and, and again, hope for the best sometime by the end of November that they'll throw us a bone and a lifeline, actually, more likely. You know, not only for political reasons, but because it's the right thing to do. I, I have faith in our province that they'll, they'll do this. So happy to, I won't be, put it this way, you won't be forcing me to sign it and I won't begrudgingly be, you know, circulating it. So happy to support that. Counselor McDonald?
Just to follow up on your comment earlier about the billing model, the or the model for funding to send a letter to the Auditor General, perhaps we can have more discussion about that in the future? Or will that come from the board? Or how, we'll have to initiate that. I think it's a great thought.
Well, we can add it to this motion, which is going to get circulated far and wide. And if enough people see merit in it, part of the ask will be that the premier, because it's not his fault about the billing model, he didn't make it. You know, direct that the Auditor General review the billing model to make sure that it's fair and equitable. So we can easily, you know, edit this to add a little another paragraph because it's wordy enough anyway. I know Madam Clerk could love that. But it could be, you know, something to the effect of, and we may get your help for wordsmithing in the be it resolved part, but request that the province submit the OPP's billing model to the Auditor General for review and yeah, review, really validation that it's actually a fair and equitable billing model. So if your content is your motion, if you're, if you're commit, content with that friendly amendment, as it were, that you could wordsmith something like that.
Agreed upon, please. Yes.
All right, so we'll, we'll take a little pause and the virtual Jeopardy music will play and, and we'll get a new printout in a moment. In the meantime, if anyone else would like to have a conversation on this, we can do that, or we can just wait for the amended motion. All right, we'll just wait. And it would be going there for review for its, its equity and, and, you know, what some, whatever we otherwise she's just going to look and go, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a model of billing model. But it is very convoluted to the point where they have to host webinars every year to try and explain it to us. So I think if we could unconvolute it, it would benefit every municipality in the province and have somebody with no skin in the game review it and say, maybe we are billing municipalities twice, as I alluded to earlier, for, for work.
Mayor Gordon, just for clarification, I have added that the OPP billing model be referred to the Auditor General for review. Did you want anything else added to that?
I mean, we might as well keep it a high level. They know what their role would be in reviewing it if the province chose to have it reviewed. So, yeah. Like rather than getting into the weeds, we can just, if it just ends up in their office, they'll know what to do with it.
Okay, I'll just finish this and then print it.
All right, so the amended motion, Counselor McDonald will read. This is seconded by Counselor East and the wording goes like this.
Goes like this. Where it is apparent that the Ontario government has overlooked the need of Ontario's small urban municipalities. And whereas Ontario's small urban municipalities face unsurmountable challenges to fund both upfront investments and ongoing maintenance of their capital assets, including roads, water, wastewater and municipal owned buildings, including recreational facilities, libraries and other tangible capital assets. And whereas an increase of And whereas an increase of 26% in one year, which is a million dollars, roughly 4% tax increase for Midland, and it is something that's never been projected. Excuse me. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the town of Midland call on Ontario government to immediately implement sustainable funding for small urban municipalities by reabsorbing the cost of Ontario provincial police force back into the provincial budget with no cost recovery to municipalities. And that the OPP billing model be referred to the Auditor General for review. And further, that the council direct staff to circulate this resolution to Premier Doug Ford, Minister of Solic, the Minister of Solicitor General, Minister of Finance, and to the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, and all municipalities in Ontario.
Lovely. Councilor East, you concur? Amendment? Perfect. Counsel, I think we probably beat this up and we're killing Counselor McDonald's voice. She's got another wordy one next. If there's no further discussion, I'll, I'll call the question. Oh, okay, all in favor? All right, on two. Carried unanimously. Now, Counselor McDonald, do you want me to read the next one? Are you good? Okay, all right. So need a secondary for the next one. I'm going to look to my, my right here, Counselor Patel. Fantastic. Okay, so next move by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Patel. Whereas the government of Ontario recently introduced legislation, Reducing Gridlock, Saving Your Time Act. I love the names. That would require municipalities secure provincial approval before building any bike lanes that reduce the number of marked lanes available for travel by motor vehicle. And whereas this act would counter the following, and it's a bulleted list, Midland's multimodal transportation plan, best practices in transportation management, climate change initiatives, cost management for future infrastructure maintenance, Bill 185's development goals and economic benefits to businesses. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor requests that the provincial government to invest in funding public transportation goals to reduce traffic congestion and promote active transportation. And further, that the mayor forward a letter to the Premier of Ontario, to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the Minister of Transportation, AMO, Association of Municipal Ontario, and Honorable Jill Dunlop, MPP, our Minister of Education, expressing opposition to the section of the bill, Reducing Gridlock, Saving Your Time Act, that would require municipalities to secure provincial approval for any new bike lanes that take space away from motor vehicles. So there we go. It's a big one. Counselor McDonald.
Thank you for helping me out with reading that. I guess the part that really I have trouble dealing with is that the Ontario government would require they can re, re tell us we can't do that in our own municipalities. Or they can say, remove that bike lane now, and that's what this Reducing Gridlock, Saving Your Time Act does. The Active Transportation Committee actually prepared a letter that we were going to attach to the motion, but we didn't. If the mayor is so willing to support this motion and send the letter, I can certainly forward the draft that was prepared. But I think it's, and the climate change thing, we're trying to become more attractive by making more bike paths and, and promoting walking and biking and other means of transportation. So I hope that the council will support this motion. And the mayor will support it as well.
Me and my new e-bike. I mean, availing myself of our bike, bike paths and trails all summer. Counsel. Counselor, was that just, oh, sorry, your finger up over here? Counselor McDonald. Or sorry, Counselor Meredith.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. Through you, just a question for staff now, because when we have our Young Street project coming up, I guess this is for Mr. Sobel, this question. Would the provincial government have any way of, of enacting in and getting rid of the bollards that are, have been passed, like passed for our Young Street project? Is this, does he have any say in that in our municipality? Or do we have to go through him for approval for that project?
We have had conversations about this. Mr. Sobel.
Yeah, through you, Mayor Gordon, Counselor Meredith. I've, I've gone through it and, and our interpretation is it wouldn't impact Young Street for a couple reasons. One being that the bike lanes are already on the road today, right? It's, we're not taking any lanes of traffic away. Plus, we have the engineering support with a traffic study from Tatham Engineering that the, the road design today meets our traffic needs and into the future and growth. So those alone are our main factors that we don't believe that they would interfere and, and change the direction of the project. And, and it would still comply with the bill.
Okay, so we're, if going ahead with this project, we're not setting us up for any type of litigation or anything from the town of Midland or not comply, not sort of getting approval or from the provincial government.
Through Mayor Gordon, Counselor Meredith, at this time, no, I don't believe so.
Thank you.
Counselor Major.
So I think what the Ontario government's doing, it's doing it in bigger cities with more congestion. I don't think they're coming up to Midland or Barry or Penertane to look at a bike lane. So I think we're, we're good to go up here. I think it's more big cities with too much traffic and too many bike lanes.
A couple of things to add then, so I tend to agree with the Counselor Major. You know, the increase in scope where this wasn't, is no longer just about changing a road and removing a vehicle lane turning into bike lane. That was what the original scope was. Since then, it's kind of grown in scope to where we're seeing some sort of arbitrary direction coming from the province to big cities like Ottawa and Toronto, directing the removal of existing, some new, some, you know, bit more dated bike lane infrastructure with no offer to fund the removal. I think Mayor Chow's probably freaking a bit about this because they spent a lot of dough on some of these really, really nice bike lanes that arguably maybe do congest, but there's an argument on both sides. But just to go in and tell them to remove with no funding and, and making the taxpayers eat that cost twice, to put it in and now rip it out. Seems a bit like an overreach, but again, we've got to remember our place. We are children of the province and anything we come up with policy-wise can't be conflicting to provincial direction. Everything has to be consistent with. So my only ask on this, if, and I'm happy to sign this letter. I really don't think it's going to make a difference, but I'm happy to do it because it's, it's symbolic and I'm guilty of throwing symbolic motions in front of council in my past term. Am I even done this term? I don't remember right now, but I think if we stripped out Midland's multimodal transportation plan, because they don't care about that, or not, quite frankly, with the province's new position and, you know, once the regs or whatever they're going to do to make this come to life, we'd have to edit ours to be consistent with the province anyway. I think that's my understanding because we can't have inconsistent policies. We can't be more, like, we can't put rules in that the province, you know, doesn't agree with. So if we removed that bullet point, the rest of it, you know, kind of stands on its own. I just think if we add that multimodal transfer, transfer, transportation plan in there, it might cause some further eye-rolling than they'll, we'll already get when we submit this, because they don't care about our, our plans. It's up to us to fix our plans to align with the province's whims. That's the way it works. Dad says, do it, we do it. So that's just my thought on it. It would be a minor, you know, amendment here where we would just, with your consent, strike that out just for the reason I'm putting, or we can leave it in, doesn't matter. But I'm just suggesting that we can't use our policies in town as an argument against the province. That's what I'm suggesting would be a kind of a fool's folly, so. Doesn't matter, leave it in, take it out. It's less work for the clerk if we leave it in, but for your consideration, we're, we're going to do as we're told, basically. And I, I believe with, with Mr. Sobel's belief that we're out of scope with this project. I have suggested, though, out of an, you know, just an abundance of caution, that we submit our project plan for Young Street proactively to the province, indicating that this road diet has existed for many years. Here's our plan. We don't have a congestion problem. We believe we're not in scope, but could you please just validate that? And here's our deadline, because we need to get the RFP going and, and get it, get going. So I definitely believe that we're going to do that to protect ourselves anyway. To Counselor Meredith's point about the bollards, we have approved the project with the bollards after beating it up. And, you know, technically, the money for the bollards comes from like a reserve, basically. It's not like it's going to raise taxes right now because we're going to put bollards in on the project. But it, there is the ongoing maintenance of them, which does present a taxable challenge year after year, and we're led to believe that they got to come out in the fall and go back in the spring. I know Mr. Sobel hasn't shared with me what, but he's working on some crafty solution that's going to reduce the effort and cost, but still see bollards there. We always do have the option of going back and ripping the bollards out and just going to paint, even though it's not best practices under Book 18 or whatever it is. We can do that. So that is possible when we're looking at reducing our spend in budget. But I just want to throw that all out there as part of this conversation. There's a lot of things to talk about. We can do what we want. The province can still override anytime, which is why I suggest we submit the project and ask for permission rather than forgiveness later and then, you know, look like idiots because we didn't ask when we know we should have. So those are just my thoughts on that for what it's worth. Any other discussion? Counselor McDonald.
I'm, I'm not clear on why we wouldn't mention our multimodal transportation plan. But if you're not comfortable leaving it there, you're the person that's going to be writing the letter. Okay, let's leave it in and make it easier on the clerk.
I was really only saying that to manage expectations, that our plans and things we scheme as a lower tier municipality mean nothing to the province, just as they largely wouldn't mean a lot to the county, because that's what happens when you're in bottom of the relationship. So if we're content, can I call the question? All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Is carried. Lovely. Moving right along. Madam Clerk, what time do we have to go overtime? 10 o'clock? Yeah, okay, we're going to make it. I know we're going to make it. Next one, I got a motion here by Counselor Patel. Need a secondary to get on the floor. Look, Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Prost. That staff provide a report to council evaluating the status and future of the cultural alliance. This is a crystal ball motion. Counselor Patel, let us enlighten us, please.
So I guess I'm on the Culture Alliance Committee and I just want to evaluate, like the motion says, the status and the future, because every meeting I've been into is seismic changes are happening and this report that staff will provide will give us a better insight that do we need to continue or do we need to close the cultural alliance? Thank you.
So feeding into the conversation here, Culture Alliance, as we all recall, or probably do, was set up with five partners originally, including Chi-Chi Chymn Sing, Chris Allen, Bozley First Nation. And they opted out without getting into all that. Their opted outs are now down to four. So we went from 10 grand each for a budget of $50,000 a year to 12.5, because we lost the funding from Bozley First Nation for like three of the five years it's been alive, I think. And the Culture Alliance, you know, clearly is working hard to try and make up for that. However, their, their costs and what they'd like to do, I haven't seen the new plan, but I'm led to believe that what they were dreaming up for 2025 was going to increase the ask significantly of the remaining four funding partners to the tune of like 20 grand or something like that. It was more than 12.5, put it that way. Clearly faced with what we're looking at budget-wise, I think Counselor Patel and the other members, you know, saw that, read the tea leaves, as it were, and realized that's not going to, that's not going to go. And there's been an ongoing conversation about reducing a lot of what they do to reduce the, the funding. And then, which then leads to the question of if the thing's going to be choked off and strangled of funding to the point where they basically forward things on Facebook, you know, as a group, I'm trivializing it, but, you know, where they're not doing a lot of, not hosting events anymore? Why even have this thing and keep dumping money into it? We can invest other ways of, you know, celebrating our cultural diversity, which keeps changing and evolving. So I'm not trying to get into the report because I support having staff report back. I'm just adding a little more context on what I've been, you know, gathering as I go along, asking questions. And it could very well be that the juice isn't worth the squeeze anymore and that, you know, much like we're seeing with SSCA and, and EDCNS, as you're going to discover through the budget process. Sharing isn't necessarily carrying anymore, like people don't necessarily want to contribute the way they used to for a variety of reasons. None of them are hostile, but it's, it's a reality. And we're struggling with funding agreements and agreeing how to share the costs of everything from the airport to SSCA to everything. So this could be another casualty of people wanting to kind of retract their funding agreements or change the way the funding agreements are set up or can't find an agreement on whether we go by population or by assessment or, you know what I mean? So there's a lot of moving parts of this, and I think that the Cultural Alliance might become a casualty of this. That's my perception. But rather than us making a purely political, probably casually informed decision based on what I'm saying and what we could ask, you know, Karen Mealing to share with us tonight, a report would give us a more fulsome review along the spectrum of, you know, is it worth it keeping it? Is it worth dumping it or something in the middle? And then we can decide whether we want to continue our participation and quite frankly, our leadership in that, in that organization. It feels icky to talk about this, but unfortunately, it's going to be a recurring theme through the budget about a lot of these co-funded shared resources that seem to be coming unglued. So is that inaccurate, although long-winded, you know, summary of kind of what you're looking for? Counselor Patel.
I guess you nailed it.
We might have talked about this in the past over a beverage, but anyway. Counselor Meredith.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. A couple of questions. First, are the other partners kind of looking at the same, you know, scope of the Culture Alliance? And the second question, it would be, is this report coming back to staff before budget? I'd assume it, it would if we're making a decision. Okay. Thank you.
We're getting nods from Karen Mealing that it would come back for budget. She's probably got most of it written in her head right now, but to be fair and not make, you know, impulsive decisions at the table, let's get that, review it, think about it, get the community to see it, too. Because it could be community pressure on our other partners to, hey, what the heck are you doing? Step up and fund this thing and let's keep it going. Or maybe there isn't. We, we don't know until we ask the question and the report's out there. Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Gordon, to Counselor Patel. Was this discussed at the Culture Alliance Committee meeting?
No, it hasn't been discussed at the Culture Alliance meeting, but we founded the Culture Alliance and our staff of Midland is running the Culture Alliance. So essentially, I would like to do their study and see if, if it's possible to continue it, because they're only funding it, they're not organizing it or running it through their staff.
Just a comment, so they'll be learning that there's going to be an evaluation report done. That this motion is brought forward without their prior knowledge.
That is correct, just like how we learned that they're not going to be funding a lot of the other things for, out of Midland. So it's, it's the same manner of doing business.
Kind of a value for money audit before we get into the budget discussions. Although the, the funding for this organization is rather immaterial when you look at our funding for other joint organizations, every bit counts, as we all know, moving into this, you know, unenviable budget. Counselor Meredith.
Yeah, it's three, Mayor Gordon. So my first question wasn't really answered, so the, the other funding partners in the Culture Alliance are, are not aware of what's going on or they're, they're not on the same page of kind of reviewing?
They're not aware of, because we're just doing the study. We haven't decided to close it or keep it open yet. So we're just doing the study and bring the report back for council to consider, and then they will be made aware of once the study's been, the report comes out. Um, the report comes out. Thank you.
So just a follow up, so the study, the the report will come to council before budget and then at budget, I imagine when the Culture Alliance comes up for their ask, uh. I'm sure the council will make a decision on that. I I'm sure that's the process. Thank you.
Through the Chair, councillor Emeritus, I'll have the report ready for the December meeting.
Councillor Prost and then councillor McDonald. Sorry, Deputy Mayor Prost and councillor McDonald.
Um, I just have a comment. Uh, I didn't realize that the committee wasn't aware. I don't think it's good practice that when we do things together with our community, with our neighbors. That um, we don't communicate. I really believe that um. It creates a lot of bad blood and I really don't like seeing that. We need to work with our neighbors. We definitely need to work with our neighbors and. I would feel if it was the other way around, I would feel shunned finding out this way. That's just my opinion and my comment.
Councillor McDonald.
That's exactly my comment was um. It it is an alliance. It's. A communities working together. Collaborating, planning events. I think the evaluation should request should come from the committee. And. There's representatives from other municipalities there. They might go to their commu- commune or their council and request the same thing. But the way it is right now, I won't be supporting this uh. The request for a report of evaluating the status.
Councillor Emeritus.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. Um. So basically, I I think this is the process. We've seen it in um. Uh, Georgia Bay Township, uh, sending a letter through council, through uh, through their representative. Um, to um, you know, uh, exit the S S C A agreement. Um, it it wasn't brought to, I'm on the S S C uh board, so it wasn't brought to the board. Um, it was directly brought to council. It's just like if we wanted to exit the Shirona Airport. Uh, we wouldn't be talking to our neighbors uh or our partners in it. We we just come to council and the council will make a decision. So I think um. Um, this is the procedure that has to be, has to be done. You have to go through. Uh, although it may sound a little bit, um, you know, um, you know, left in the dark from our, from our partners, but. Um, I I I think um. To see if there's value for basically um, or what we're getting out of it. And I had previous discussions with. Um, councillor Patel, and there's really no, there's not enough money in the bank. Right now to do to do anything unless we increase the funding significantly and and hopefully. I'm not sure what the funding formula is, but I think it's split um, you know, equally through uh, four ways, I believe it is now. So unless it's increased significantly. Then um. Then it would survive, but uh, if we're only in it for, you know, under ten thousand, then there's not much you can do. Uh, for for that, so um. Thinking of it now, it's probably the the procedure that everybody would take, so um, I would be supportive of looking uh, for the study and to make a decision. Um, at budget. Thank you.
I think that's a good distinction, except when you were talking about the S S A and Georgia Bay Township. Um, communicating they were exiting before they did that. They started the ball off asking for a review of the funding agreement. And the actual agreement of itself of the S S C A. So they weren't feeling presumably, uh, they were getting good value for the money. So they wanted and they weren't happy with the funding model. Uh, so they put a motion that I think Tay then echoed and I think then it went to Tiny and then maybe it went to Penetang eventually came to us just because of the delay in our meetings. So somebody had to start the ball rolling. And it wasn't driven within the S E S C A because in their mind, everything's. Happy snappy, right? They got an agreement, they get funding, they make new programs, they do what they do. And I think to a large degree, they do a great job at it. Um, but. Just to be clear, we're not doing anything, I think, untowards to our partners. Somebody has to start by asking the question and we saw this play out in a perfect example in S S C A. When, you know, before choosing to, you know, press the eject button, uh, they just, they were looking for support to revisit. The con- you know, the whole constitution of the S S C A and the way it was funded. So I think that's really what we're asking here, only the, you know, the spend is significantly less with with this organization than it is with S S C A. And there are things that S S C A does that are, without getting into all our, all the flacks here, that, you know, we have to do. This Culture Alliance was formed out of a desire to. Do what Culture Alliance started off to try and do. It was moderate moderately successful and they need more money. And so here we are going into budget. Uh, again, rather than us just making a decision hacking slashing like I feel we're going to be doing in this budget. It would make sense to get a report before we make an emotional decision to defund or reduce funding. Uh, or implode, as it were, for the lead agency, the Culture Alliance. So I do support this um, report. Because I'd like to know before we get into budget, whether I could be able to sleep at night. Reducing funding, eliminating it, whatever, uh, or continuing funding it regardless of our neighbors. Uh, positions. So. Just. I just wanted to assuage the concerns that we're doing something slippery or underhanded or unneighborly. This is the process. And they watch our meetings as I watch theirs, so they'll learn about it and the media is here and I'm sure it'll make a little story at some point. Uh, so everyone's going to know about it in short order. Did I prompt any more? Yeah, councillor McDonald.
Just one final comment. I would have felt more comfortable. Asking for a report if it would have been discussed at the Culture Alliance Committee level first. Because they, it's a collaboration, they work together, it's an alliance. And all municipalities could do it at once. I understand your um explanation that somebody has to kick it off, but. That's just my comfort level of having it discussed there first.
All right, any other comments or recall the question? All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? All right, that is carried. Good conversation about this, so I'm sure our neighbors will appreciate that. Uh, oh, the next one is mine. Let me slid in as it were. Um, I think it's just about the last one on the agenda, so I will pass the chair over to deputy mayor. Want me to read it? It's long and wordy. That's my big long one, yeah. Okay, all right. So it's moved by me. Actually, you have to do this part officially if I'm giving it to you and then you'll all be happy to read it.
Moved by Mayor Gordon, seconded by. Councillor Major. You want it?
So this motion is that council supports the mayor's request. To add my signature to correspondence from elected mayors across the province to the Premier of Ontario requesting the provincial government. Uh, requesting the provincial government for the following. One, that they become an intervenor on any court case that restricts the ability of municipalities to regulate and prohibit encampments. Advocating for the principle endorsed by the U S Supreme Court, the city of Grant Pass, Oregon. That courts should not be dictating homelessness policy. And further, that they strengthen the existing system of mandatory community-based and residential mental health care. And to expand service to treat those who have severe and debilitating addictions. And that they implement a drug and diversion court system throughout the entire province and ensure the necessary resources. To allow a meaningful focus on rehabilitation as opposed to incarceration. And that they amend the Trespass to Property Act to include a separate provision for repetitive acts of trespass. The penalty for which should include a period of incarceration. And to further permit a police officer to arrest a person who commits repetitive acts of trespass. After having been directed by the police officer not to engage in such activity. These amendments should also include an option for referral to a diversion court for charges of repetitive trespass. And that they enact legislation providing clear guidance regarding the open and public use of drugs. Being prohibited in the same manner as the open consumption of alcohol. So this, none of this is my wording. This is all taken verbatim from the big, the Ontario big city mayors. Who are suffering under encampments and mental health and safety issues in their downtown cores to a degree that Midland couldn't even come to terms with. Uh, we think we have a problem. These big cities have a problem. When I first saw this, uh, because there is also the talk about the notwithstanding clause. Which the province would, has always the, it's the nuclear option. They have it, it's baked in the constitution, was the only way to get everyone to sign. And some provinces use it routinely. Uh, it would be the nuclear option if the courts, um, if there was a need. For the government to basically set aside the court's ruling to do something. It's for a period, I think, of five years. Uh, there's a bunch of rules and of course, you just can't. You shouldn't just use the notwithstanding clause. So I wanted to be important. This is not focusing on the use of notwithstanding clause. I personally, you know. Don't like the notwithstanding clause. It's there, it exists though. I can't do anything about that. And it's always an option for the government to use regardless of a letter we sign. They can do it anytime they want. Matter of fact, they've already used it. But all these other things that are so important in the ask here about creating community-based addiction treatment. Um, you know, so that there is a place for people to go because that's number one question. So you move into an encampment that's unsafe. We just had the fire department in one of our encampments, you know, in the past week. People OD in them, sexual assaults happen in them, physical assaults other than sexual assaults happen in them, crime happens in them. People. You have medical incidents, you know, they're well off the grid. And then people just continually trespass. We haven't had anybody setting up camp on town hall land, land right here yet, which I'm kind of surprised about, really. Um, and no one's camping in people's backyards, like I have a pretty big backyard. What if someone decided they were going to set up tent in my backyard? What do I do about it? It's my property. Well, there's all kinds of ambiguity around getting people off of. Private property, which the town's property is private property. If you can be trespassed from it, it's private property. So there's all kinds of ambiguity that the province is the only one that can wade in and make rules and make changes. They also fund all of the services for healthcare, mental health. Addictions, uh, you know, homelessness prevention, which, you know, we get through the county. Uh, supportive housing, transitional housing, which is the next step on the housing continuum from living hard on this, you know, in the bush. Next is supportive housing, shelter. Et cetera. They're responsible for all of this. The big cities actually get money and have a mandate from the province to build housing shelters and operate the things that we rely on the county to do as a lower tier. So the big cities actually have a bit more autonomy in solving their own problems than we do as small urban municipalities in lower tiers all over the province. So I thought it was a mess that the small urbans that are suffering equally, but to a lesser degree with the exact same problems. Unlike our rural neighbors who don't have encampments, they're all going to come into the urban setting, which is what happens. And they come to the setting that has all the services like Midland, so you don't have a lot of these happening in Penetang. They come to Midland. And we've, I've already reiterated so many times the aggravating factors, methadone clinics in Midland, probation and paroles in Midland, courthouses in Midland, or next door to the jail where people are discharged in the homelessness daily. The mental health center and the hospital, both which have discharge planning, but still just can't keep you indefinitely. If they can't find a place for you, out you go. We're the bottom of the bowl. We collect it all and our taxpayers are left soaking up the the results. And quite frankly, when you have nothing, you're going to commit crime. As people take what little you do have. It feeds into crime. Does it make every homeless person a criminal? No, it does not. Is every homeless person an addicted person? No, they're not. Is every addicted person homeless? Of course not. But this is so complicated that we need the province to do more than it's doing. And the challenges we put out by the Ontario big city mayors and premier Ford literally in the press release said, well, okay, guys, grow a spine and and or a backbone, whatever it was. And make the request of me. I was curious about that, so I again texted the the premier. God love the guy. Called me back a couple of days later. I was out east. Visiting a little encampment thing, the alternative encampment out in Nova Scotia. And we chatted about this for the three minutes I had of his ear. And I'm like, are you serious? Like, or or were you, uh, you know? Just being kind of flippant, you know, somehow sometimes you, you know, you're not sure how to read somebody, right? Is he being sarcastic? Grow a spine and requested of me, eye rolling, or do you really mean that? And his response to me was, he's dead serious. Make the request. So then I reached out to Mayor Nuttall, who happened to be over in Germany, I think somewhere or in Europe anyway, hustling for some business for Barry. And he sent me a copy of the letter and said, we've already submitted from the big city mayors, but. Please send me your digital signature and I will more than happy happily add your name to the the list. And of course, the request would be that this fan out to other smaller municipalities all across the province. So we would be the first non-big city to endorse this. Technically, I could have just given him my digital signature and said slap it on, baby. But I didn't feel right doing that for for two reasons. One, I don't have strong manpower powers. Okay, which would enable me to to make some of these more autocratic decisions and I'm cool with that. And secondly, I told him I need my council's blessing because I'm not going to put my name on a letter that's as contentious as this unless I have the blessing of my council. Even though I I largely believe we all know that something needs to be fixed and we don't have the capacity, funding, autonomy or ability to fix any of it. So it seemed like a bit of a no brainer, but because of the contentiousness around notwithstanding clause and the whole concept of sweeping people out of homeless encampments. With nowhere to go. Um, I thought this is really important for us to have the conversation. So just speaking quickly about the sweeping people out of encampments, we have yet to close down an encampment in our community that I know of. We've visited plenty of them. The police certainly know where they all are. Outreach workers certainly know. And I believe most of them aren't even on our property right now. The ones that I know of are actually on other people's property, undeveloped land. Uh, you know, when we get them on Midland Bay Landing, that's our property, but the bigger encampments aren't in Midland Bay Landing, they're elsewhere. You guys know where they they are probably. So uh, we don't have this big problem yet, so the the idea of of this isn't, you know. Asking our bylaw and police to go in and raid the encampments and hurl them out. That's not what this is asking. Although part of the ask is for the province to give us the authority to do that if and when we deem it necessary for the safety of our community and the people in the encampments. We don't have that power right now because of the court ruling. There has to be a place for them to go. The cold-hearted prickly part of me, which I do have a little bit of in me, that that's what keeps me driven sometimes. Is when people say, well, you kick them out of the encampments, where do they go? Where are they supposed to go? That prickly part of me goes, I don't really care. Just not here in Midland. Where did you come from? Like, you're not from Midland. How did you end up here? Well, I came out of the jail or I got discharged from this or I got voted off the island or there's a many number of ways they could end up in Midland. So my answer to them was. Go back to where you came from. We're going to try and solve our problem with our chronic homelessness of people from our community. But as we're going to see with mass deportations that, you know, I'm led to believe are going to happen from the U S. And uh, homeless encampments that are going to be uh, broken down in larger cities. If we don't participate in this, we're going to be the benefactors of these displaced people. And I know I'm just talking about sweeping them out to somewhere else. But I think most of our residents are just tired of the crime and the passed out people ODing on the street and people with their pants down, you know, that guy ended up getting arrested for a series of assaults when he's such a nice guy on the news. You know, uh, we have these problems. We got to do something. People expect us to do something. We have very little something we can do. Most of it's police and most of it's the province and healthcare. But the one thing we can do is add our voice to the other mayors saying, province, this is ninety nine percent your problem. I mean, you could, you could pin some of it on the federal government too, for sure. But we're focusing on what what's in our our wheelhouse, which is the province. That's dad. Dad, we need your help. And this letter would just add our voice to the chorus and hopefully inspire other small urban municipalities to do the same. That this isn't just a big city issue. We all know it's the small. Town issues. That are all over happening all over province. So there's my long way to go. I wanted to fully explain this thought that I have thought about the ramifications. That I'm not being cold-hearted and leading with my prickly side that sometimes doesn't care. I'm trying to lead with my caring side. That does care, but I care more about my community than I do about people that come here to be homeless, drug addicted. Uh, commit crime, things like that. I care about my community first, which includes people experiencing homelessness who are local midlanders and we have those. So. That's my ask. I need your permission. I want your permission before I would put my name on this letter and submit it and I thought we'd have a good wholesome discussion about this tonight. Um, and then I'd ask you for that permission. I'm going to drink a water. Councillor East.
So I would fully support this. The truth is, is that Midland should be considered under the scope of the large cities anyways. With all of the resources that have been planted in Midland that I've spoken to before. Super jail, Chigamick Guesthouse Shelter. Mental Health Center. We have all of these resources that are bringing in. People. That we're just not capable to manage. So I fully support and appreciate the courage that it took to speak to this. If we don't get a grip of this now, Midland residents and our taxpayers won't be able to walk the streets, their streets that they pay for. So I fully support this.
I have a hard time with this. Uh, the letter does speak of supports with addictions and mental health. And of course we want all that and we do want our streets to be safe. But I I can't support this because move if it comes to it, like you said, it hasn't happened. If it comes to it, moving people from here, whether they're from here or not from here, you're you're displacing even more another human being who is already down. You don't kick people when they're down. We need to get to the root of the problem. It's going to take years, several years, a lot of money, a lot of patience. But I I believe we can do it and we're trying. We're trying very, very hard. We have a public meeting coming up next week and I think we need to keep trying. We can't give up on people. I can't support this.
It's procedurally, I'll I'll take the chair.
Oh, it's okay. I got it.
You okay?
I apologize. Um, I'm just trying to see the human side of that part of that letter. Um, anyway, Counselor Meredith.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Post. Um, uh, I do fully support this. I mean, the the number of times I've I've spoken to um the public, to business owners, um, and the the number of times, you know, saying, you know, hands are tied. There's um, our bylaw hands are tied. Um, there's so many people that are are afraid for their safety, right? So our down, there's downtown issues and they're not just in downtown. They're 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 all over Midland. So I think we need some authority. Um, and I don't think we we should wait till the last minute to get it. Not saying that we're going to use it, but um, you know, and the mayor continually uh says that, uh, you know, you you think we have a problem. We're not so bad. Well, I I I don't like those words. You know what? You have to keep on pressing your foot down and and taking care of 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 your community. Uh, so everybody feels safe. No matter if 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 it's minimal compared to, you know, or really a berry and so forth. Um, I'm not taking the the risk um to not have the power to do something if it if it comes, um, you know, to fruition. So um, not saying that we're going to use this right now, but the time will come when, you know, there's there's safety concerns in our community and then they're going to look at us and say, what are you doing about it? Um, just today I was at Tom Smith's and and the downtown issue came up, you know, I was I was getting um, you know, a couple of fuses put in my truck. First thing they came to me and and they said, no, you know, what's going on with these downtown issues? So and I said, you know, we're we're working on it and we are doing a great job like for, you know, we we should pat ourselves on the back uh of what we're trying to to, you know, to to do here. Um, and uh, you know, even um, talking about the Guest House Shelter, I mean, I I, you know, I've had some comments that that's that's, you know, it's it's getting better. Right? So those comments are 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 progress, right? So, um, but we cannot uh, take our foot off the gas pedal here. And and if something like this um, can come into uh the arsenal of of what we can do uh when a situation arises, uh, I don't I don't think we should be able to to, you know, to turn our backs on 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 this. So I I fully support this. When the mayor, um, you know, uh, texted me this or I think he came on Facebook or, you know, it's music to my ears. So it's it's progress to get to the next level if we have to, if if we have to use it. And think first with our hearts, but at the end of the day, community safety, you know, i- is 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 one of our pillars. Right? And and it's our responsibility to keep our community safe because we already know the policing uh services is is not a hundred percent here. So and if we can use uh some powers, uh, our own staff, whether it's trespassing or so forth, then I'm for it. So I'm I'm hoping that this will pass and hopefully uh Premier Doug Ford will uh uh do something about it.
I would just like to point something out if I may. A lot of our crime, a lot of our problems downtown um and around town are not necessarily uh people that are homeless. And in my own opinion, I think the drugs in this town, the people bringing them in and our locals, our people um are distributing them. So there's there's much bigger problems that we are continuously trying to address, but it's not all homeless people that are, I mean, I don't even think they're half the problem downtown. Does anybody else have any further comments or questions? Counselor Patel.
Thank you, Deputy. So I've been supportive of this because we have to look at a different approach. Because we have to think about the future, the economic activity. If we don't try something else, we can have immigration happen where people are leaving the country because they're not happy with the status of what we're doing here. We're not trying to make any change. We're just trying to just further go down the hole. So I don't want to see immigration happen because we need to grow as a country. We need to grow as a town. We need to grow as people. So by trying something like this, we could avoid the greater good. The the, I mean, we could, we could avoid something that could put us into not growing. Thank you.
Counselor McDonald.
Thank you. And um Counselor Meredith just reminded me where I could read the the motion again. And my initial reaction was I could support this. But the dialogue that um we received from the mayor changed my mind and I I am I'm thinking that possibly we could write our own letter as a result of our symposium on the fourteenth that is more directly related to our situation and not the towns. A lot of it is true here, but I think um we have a situation that I think could be more meaningful to mention our having neighbors like Waypoint and the super jail and that where it directly affects us. So I would prefer that we write our own than just tag on to the big city mayors. So I won't be supporting the motion.
Counselor Major.
So the the real thing about this is the judge from Branford last year that I think it was Kitchener or Waterloo, where he said the encampments don't have to come down. So that started the whole ball rolling of why none of the encampments around the province are anything can be done to it. And I think for me, for growing up here and with my job that I talked to so many people. And then you go down behind um Value Mart, what what's the new grocery store now Value Mart? Or No Thrills? And just places I am around town, it's and people just don't even want to go downtown. So I'm not waiting for us to do a letter. It's like get this in if we want to follow up with a letter about Midland after. But the most important thing is to get this going now. But everyone's got to realize it was that one judge a year ago that caused a lot of this problems in a lot of the towns in Ontario.
Counselor East.
It's a tough one emotionally, I know. I just, if I can speak to, I had a a homeless gentleman that I've known my whole life come into my store. This would have been two weeks ago and he was uh telling me, and I was furious. He was telling me that he was charged by the police for trespassing. He was caught on property and uh he was genuinely a good man that really fell on hard times and he just needed some place to stay. What he shared with me though was because of the fact that he was incarcerated, being incarcerated changed his life for the better. He was able to find God. He was able to save his relationship with his daughter. I think if we're not proactive about this, we're also going to be looking at putting our own community in danger. Now we just can't think about ourselves. But what happens when one of our town residents has to defend themselves? Because it's inevitable. If we don't stop or try to stop or deter eventually in self-defense, one of our town residents are going to self-defend themselves. They're going to end up incarcerated because we didn't make the proper choices to protect them. Hearing the story of the homeless friend of mine really opened my eyes to sometimes enabling people is not the right decision. And I can tell you right now that this guy goes to my church now. Even though it was hard and he had to look at himself and the incarceration was really something that pissed me right off because I didn't believe that he should be incarcerated for trespassing. If it didn't happen, he wouldn't have found his way back to who he was. So I'm going to be standing with this letter. If we don't do something now, we're putting our own residents in danger and we should hold ourselves accountable when they do defend themselves. It's inevitable. You look at that guy that got killed behind Inos. That wasn't a homeless guy. That was drugs. When these drugs hit our streets and we can't control it, the people that are committing the crimes don't care about any of us or any of our rights. Law-abiding citizens across Canada have less rights than the criminals do. We have to make some choices and stand with the governments, our our municipalities, the other mayors that are taking the courage to at least get some sort of I don't even know what the word is, but they're making an effort. And I can tell you right now, when things go down road, like Counselor Meredith said or Bill said, it's going to get worse. It will get worse. And if we don't do something about it, we're putting our own residents in danger when they have to defend themselves. So I'm standing strong with this. And it's not only just for our residents, but for the people that find themselves in trouble, you've got to stop enabling them. They have to find their way. And whatever that is.
Counselor Bald.
Yes, thank you. I agree with our mayor uh totally. And I believe that um it will be worse if we don't say anything. It's it's basically uh a few years ago, I was actually um defendant, like like I would help people in the uh in the um, the court system. And uh, sometimes they would come from the CNCC. Okay, so the correctional, whatever. And they would just bring a bus full of people and stop at, they stopped at the library and that was it. There was no, you know, nothing for them. They didn't have any loathing. They didn't have, they they just had whatever they had on their backs. They didn't have any money. So uh, you know, we we have to, like Midland is such a a great place. I go to the park often. But uh, there are some places I do not go in into the woods. I love going into the woods. But I know that there are people there with maybe little tents or whatever and they're, you know, poking and getting high. So uh, you know, I do agree with the mayor and I hope that uh we can figure out something. That's it.
Mayor Gordon.
Thanks. Just want to follow up. Counselor McDonald, you made a good point. I'm hoping that I can still find your support for this because I'd like us to be as as unified as possible. But I think it's a fantastic idea, us following up on this bigger ask that's that's being echoed by all these big city mayors because it has a very granular list of things that are, we all need in common. But if we followed up with our own sort of maiden Midland North Simcoe ask coming out of the symposium, there's nothing wrong with the with the province hearing from us twice. Once as a voice in a chorus, um, asking for the big, big stuff. And then once that's oh, again, that's a bit more uh Midland-centric to our specific needs. So I mean, I would, I would look at these as mutually exclusive. Uh, not one or the other. I would totally support doing both. Counselor Major mentioned that as well too, but I just thought it was worth repeating.
Counselor McDonald.
Thank you. Well, I will support it under that condition. But I tell you what turned me off the most is where you cannot even consider speaking about your prickly side. That that was very offensive to me. We just have to find a way to help them. And I'll support the motion, but under the condition that we follow up with our own letter.
Any further questions or comments? Counselor Major.
So we'll send the letter in as it is and then make sure, I think like Counselor McDonald said, we make one up more or less um to do with Midland, not Simcoe County, to do with Midland. Because I live in Midland. I don't live in Simcoe, like, I'm not worried about other places in Simcoe County. We got to look after our town. I'm elected official and we do a letter up for Midland. I'm good with that and I'll support his letter right now.
Counselor Meredith.
You saw that. Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor Post. I just wanted just to read it. Um, we were talking about homeless and and you you mentioned a comments, uh, some comments on on that uh, uh, from AMO from what and AMO has, um, you know, educated myself quite quite a bit on uh, on homelessness and and so forth and the encampments and and the majority of 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 the most vulnerable people are 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 in these encampments in the bush. They, we we learned that from from AMO. That they don't want to be seen. They're they're kind of humiliated and and so forth. The ones that we are experiencing in downtown Midland are aggressive. And I and I don't, I I I'm not sure, like, some of them are homeless. The majority of the aggressive ones are 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 out there for to to beg for money, to get drugs, uh, to cause disturbances. We've seen it in storefronts where we uh, we 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 couldn't do anything. Um, police would go there asking to leave. Um, landlords would would go there. Real estate agents would would go up to the doorstep where vacant buildings, they were trying to sell um, a building and telling them where to go. So now you see gates coming, uh, security gates coming coming up. So this is, we we need authority to deal with that. Um, and and this is what I believe we need so we don't have to take things into our own hands, but also get the support from the OBP because it it could become dangerous, right? So it's just another tool for us to have and um and and the the businesses rely on this because without them, which who fund the county, who fund um, the the homelessness, um, they're a big, they're a big part of this. And and sometimes you feel as a business owner, you're working to put yourself out of business. Right? So if if, because we're funding something that's just turning around and 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 having a negative impact on our on our business. And we see that, we have seen that in the past with 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 the Guest House Shelter. Everything around it is is vacant, shutting down. Right? Or their or their investment is gone, right? Because it, I believe it was mismanaged. I think now it's managing better and we're seeing some positive results. But again, not not to let our foot off the gas, got to keep on it. And I think um, as long as I'm sitting in this chair, I I will keep on and keep on and never let my foot off the gas with this situation. So I think it's important. Um, and So I think it's important, um, and 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 I fully, fully support, uh, this, and and I think it's a no-brainer. Um, and I and I know you, sometimes you're, well, you're thinking with your heart, but again, um, there's two sides here, and you feel your heart for for the person really, really need, but again, there's that person that's aggressive, taking advantage of the situation. Um, and we cannot decipher which one's which, um, unfortunately. Um, so, you know, we are, we are putting an emotional, um, I guess, uh, an an emotional, you attach an emotional decision to it, um, uh, as we see it right now in front of us. But in in a year from now, um, you know, that decision can turn on us, our decision tonight can turn on us without without having any type of authority. So, uh, again, 100% uh, um, in for this, and I think it's what we need. Thank you.
Any further comments? Counselor Major.
So can we add on? Like, say, we we support the mayor sending the letter. Can we add on that we want to review it after and like, um, Counselor McDonald said, for the stipulation that we do a letter for the town of Midland? No?
Through Deputy Mayor to Counselor Major, the motion that's on the floor is to provide support for the mayor to sign the letter that he's spoken about. If council wanted to send a letter once the symposium happens, and if that's the direction, one of the members of council could present that motion for the next meeting to prepare a letter. But tonight, the motion on the floor is for the mayor to be able to sign the letter on behalf of council.
Thank you.
I I've listened to, um, all the counselors and the mayor, and I respect their views, and I I don't want people to think that I don't care about our downtown or our businesses or our people, uh, but I still cannot be part of so, uh, signing something that is potentially going to displace the displaced already. I think that we could do something that is, uh, like, like Counselor McDonald said, something that is directly for our town. I mean, I know it's the same everywhere, but we are still our own town, and we know what our issues are and where the problems are. And I don't think, I mean, this says as it is, that they could, we could go into encampments and sweep them away. And anyway, I, uh, I still cannot support it as is, and I'd ask for a recorded vote, please.
Deputy Mayor, the discussion is finished, so I'll call for the recorded vote. Mayor and members of council, you've heard the question when I call your name, please say yes or no. Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Patel.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Post.
No.
Counselor East.
Yes.
Counselor Meredith.
Yes.
Counselor Major. Counselor Bald.
Yes.
And Mayor Gordon.
Yes.
The motion is carried seven to one.
All right, thank you, counsel. Um, I'm I'm actually really super glad we had such lengthy debate on this. Uh, it's really important, it's a very complex issue, but no simple solutions. And ultimately, what the province does with this letter with more signatures on it is out of our hands. So I agree, let's work on our homegrown solution, which we do have some more availability to influence, and let's come to the, uh, let's get everyone out to this this symposium next week and and try and build one. All right, uh, we are running out of time, and we're also running out of agenda, which is actually not a bad thing. So I have a motion here moved by Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Post, uh, seconded by Counselor Patel, that the following bylaws, bylaw 2024-57 amend development charges, bylaw 2019-80 is amended, bylaw 2024-59 provide for interim tax levy for 2025 and to provide for penalty and interest, and bylaw 2024-60 remove part lock control of blocks nine, 11, 13, 33, and 39 within registered plan of subdivision, 51M, dash 1254 in the Bayport subdivision, and bylaw 2024-61 establish municipal addressing manual and to repeal bylaw 2010-47 and bylaw 2010-87 be passed and enacted. Counsel, this is just, uh, wrapping up what we've already discussed and approved this evening. Any comments, questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried? Next, move by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Meredith, that bylaw 2024-62 being a bylaw to adopt proceedings of regular council meeting held November 6, 2024 be passed and enacted. All those in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. And the last one of the night, move by Counselor Bald, seconded by Counselor Major, this regular meeting of council at 9:48 PM. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. We are adjourned. Thank you.